Twenty twenty-four, six P M. Item two will be roll call. City Secretary?
Mayor Hoven.
Present.
Mayor Proton Swanner. Mayor Proton Matha. Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item four is pledge allegiance, followed by the Texas pledge. I'm sorry, invocation led by Pastor Belt of Tanglewood Church of Christ. Pastor. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so by standing up voluntarily. Pastor, the chamber is yours.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, as we approach your throne at this time, we ask that you be with each of the members here of this assembly. And ask that you, since you have been the one to appoint them to rule over us, we ask that you continue to give them the wisdom and the strength they need to do your will. Father, we ask you for their protection at a time like this, that you want to with their families, that you keep them safe. Thank you, Father, for the love that you shared with us through your son. We ask that you help us to always consider the path that he took, that we should be right behind him. Father, we ask these sayings in your son's name. Amen.
Join us for the pledge allegiance, Councilmember Thompson.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Then there's no proclamations?
No, sir.
Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during consideration of said item. Item six, consider agenda council. Take a moment to overlook the consent agendas presented. We entertain a motion to accept, amend, or refuse.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, Councilmember Swanner, second by Councilmember Cornell. All those in favor, a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the regular agenda. Item seven. We're going to consider applying for the Texas Water Development Fund, D-Fund, to authorize to apply for the Texas Water Development Fund. Mr. Rollet.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to ask for your consideration and approval for the authorization to apply for funding through Texas Water Development Board Fund. These funds will be allocated for the construction and design of the two million gallon proposed water tower located in the northeast of our city. The current estimate from the engineer for the projected cost of this tower is forty-five million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. The city would be applying for the D-Fund loan, which is a long-term fixed, I'm sorry, yeah, long-term fixed interest rate loan with twenty or thirty-year repayment terms. Council, this application for funding is crucial for the future investment of water in the northeast portion of the city. It will ensure that we have adequate water pressure and storage for the future demand and development of this area. And then I've also got a handout which explains what the D-Fund is from Texas Water Development. Any questions?
Give me the total price of that again.
It is forty-five million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty. Now, that includes Pipeline Two and from, that will loop in from One Hundredth Street, all the way to where J B S would, you know, follow all the way up to the proposed tank site and then back down to loop back into the system.
Where's the tank site, is it?
It would be at One Hundredth Street, all the way straight.
No, I mean the tower.
Where exactly is it? Yeah, so at One Hundredth Street going east and then where J B S on the master plan where it would loop up there. So it would be on the northeast side above the new.
Sports complex.
Sports complex, sorry, yes. Yes, it's above the, sorry, it's above the sports complex moving water style.
It's over on the Hurt Ranch.
Yes, sir.
Yes, just making sure.
It should be over on Hurt.
Yes.
It'll be on the Hurt Ranch.
Yes.
It'll be to the west, northwest, northwest of the.
Yes.
It would be on the east, north east of the property, but west of the sports complex.
Yeah, it'd be out, it's between, yeah.
So let me make this very clear. This is not saying yes.
Yeah.
This is only to turn in the application for us to, for them to get, grant it to us and then I will take it back to you guys. You guys will then approve it and then we will go from there.
And if you approve, if you decided not to approve it, the application stays active. If you want to go back then the next year, the work's done and you can basically hit refresh. And this is what the water board told us.
Yes, yes.
You can basically hit refresh and it's applied again. And since you've already been approved, if you are approved, since you've already been approved once, it shortens the process. You're not having to go out and hire a consultant and all that. This is, even if you decided, well, we shouldn't do this this year, because this is an obligation, just like any other obligation.
Right.
Just very good terms. You wouldn't have done the work for nothing like some things that we've done.
Right. Well, we've got to get, that's part of the master plan up that way. We've got to get ahead of this curve, which I know we're, even putting in the sports complex, we're talking about doing a, doing a lift station up that way.
Yes.
Because of the water pressure. So the number of houses that are going up there.
Yes, for future development, this is crucial.
This is a lot of restricted, yeah, future development of housing.
And the work that we're doing at the Yukon Pump Station currently right now, which is adding a two million gallon above storage ground tank and then an extra pump will allow us to be able to make sure that we're able to keep that.
Keep pressure.
Keep that pressure on in the, in the, in the upper plane.
Yes, sir.
And the expanding plane.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Yeah, this is definitely trying to stay ahead of the curve.
Absolutely.
Definitely have to look at hard.
Council, Alex, is there anything else on that?
That is it.
Are you looking for a consensus to move forward or are you looking for a vote?
Yes, sir. Well, no, I need a vote. I need a vote.
Council?
So moved.
Second? I was gonna, okay, that was quick. I guess there's no discussion. Or comments. I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner, second by Councilmember Thompson, to approve item seven as proposed by Alex Rollet. All those in favor, a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing unanimously.
Thank you, Alex.
We're going to move on to resolutions. Consider approval for transfer of funds to the Bob Derrington Waste Water Plant. Mr. Rollet.
Mayor and Council, the Utilities Department is requesting your consideration and approval for the transfer of funds for the Derrington Plant. We are requesting to move three hundred and fifty thousand from the Pioneer C I P to the Derrington Maintenance Other Fund. These funds will help improve day-to-day functions within the plant, helping us continuously operate. These funds will be used to service, maintain, and refurbish motors, pumps, and other equipment that is essential to the plant. This allocation of money is currently within our budget.
Council, any discussion? No comments or discussion, entertain a motion to approve item eight as presented. So moved. I have a motion by Councilmember Cornell, second by Councilmember Vasquez. All those in favor indicated by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing unanimously.
And while Alex is still up here, I'm going to have to brag on him a little bit. We had a complete blowout as I sent you all today on an eight-inch line in three hours from basically finding it to having water back on.
Good job.
I saw your crews go out there and you were giving us updates of you guys isolated the three valves and then the five valves. And so you guys were on it with, from the, from the time you, notification of the city at isolation and then change out took place over three hours.
And affected twelve people.
Yep, twelve people.
Twelve residents, yes.
This is all due to the new initiatives that the city has put in with the standard operating procedures.
Yes, sir.
You know what to do when you get notified there.
Yes, sir.
So Alex, you've done a great job. Tell your crew that this council, the city, very appreciative of what you're doing as far as addressing this ongoing issue.
Yep, thank you very much.
One hundred-year-old system. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
We move on to item nine, consider appropriation of positions filled for submission of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Ms. Banda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, yes, thank you, Dalia. Today we are, I'm sorry, can you go back one more, Dalia? Make sure I'm on the right note here. Yes, okay, thank you. So today we are looking at the positions that were filled after the submission of the budget for this fiscal year. As you all know, we have to comply with regulatory actions and submitting that to the city secretary within a specified timeline. And so what we didn't want is a whole month or two or so of our directors not being able to hire the people they needed. So these positions here were funded, I'm sorry, were hired after the August ninth timeline. So we're just seeking an appropriation for these salaries for people currently employed.
These are already in place?
Yes. Yes, they were hired before September thirtieth.
To prepare the budget to be in time for, to be prepared, there have been people hired that now, that weren't hired before that, but they had to be cut off time. And this is just funding that. We have, we have the money to fund that.
So the new budget will reflect two additional animal control officers from the two that we already had? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Three additional officers. Okay. So the previous budgets that we've had over the last four years, these will have been left in last year's, this year's budget and just filled and we would never known when or where.
You would have never known if they were hired or not hired.
I get you.
And just a little bit of explanation on that. Kaylee brought to me, budget team brought to me, the number, the grand total basically of the unhired positions that we zeroed out. And it was a little over thirteen million. We thought it'd be right around twelve. With benefits, you're probably looking at fifteen plus. So they were never hired, but they were in your budget, that, that hurt your fund balance. If they're never hired, it stays in there, it helps your fund balance. And that's part of this exercise. Hopefully it won't be every council meeting when we get this leveled out. But there will be times where you'll have to do this kind of every council meeting. And it's not that unusual, because if you'll listen to things like the county commissioners, they pay bills every time. And this then finds what's actually hired. And the, this actually gives a lot more flexibility as we're talking in, during the discussion and work session, to directors, to fire, to P D, to billing and collection, to permitting. Where we ran up against walls before where we've said, okay, we need a person, but we can't hire somebody at a level two, but we're full at, at level ones. You don't have that arbitrary number anymore. If you can hire somebody in at that level one and you can justify, I'll bring it to you all, I'll ask you to fund it and you move on. I'll use P D as an example. Two, there has been this arbitrary number that at some point was calculated somewhere out there in the ether that said we need X number of policemen out here. Whether that's patrol, it doesn't matter, we need this many out, out here. And so we'd say, okay, we're short that many, but let's say it's hundred and fifty that we need out there. Under the new way of looking at, that that arbitrary number was, that the new way of looking at it, if that hundred and fifty are hired and it's still not getting the job done, there's no reason not to go to hundred and sixty. It's needs-based, truly needs-based and not speculative of some accountant somewhere that said, this is what you need. It's to get the job done, but without tying up millions of dollars in there.
Until you get there.
Until you get there.
And the previous graphic we were looking at is in relation to the needs base. This graphic specifically, I apologize, is in relation to the positions that we hired after August ninth. So this is the number that we're asking for, for positions filled from August ninth to September thirtieth. But there are some police patrol on there, solid waste, billing and collections, all of those you can see up there did have positions filled after August ninth. And those are broken out by the different funds that each position belongs to.
We'll put up on that. Council, you have any questions, comments? Glad you filled some jobs. Okay, so basically the amount is one point seven?
Yes.
Council? I'm sorry, Mayor, but for this budget year, it'll be prorated, it'll be, they've already been hired, so this whole one seven won't fall in the new budget year. Right. Some of them went back and, the one we just closed down.
This is what we need to fund their positions this year.
For this year.
For this year.
October one.
Yes.
I thought you said they were hired in September.
They were and that fell in last year's budget.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, sir.
Trying to make sure.
You're correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Council, any other questions? Now entertain a motion to accept item nine as presented for the filling of this appropriation for positions filled after submission of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget.
So moved.
A motion by Councilmember Matha, or second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swanner, all those in favor indicated by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing unanimously. We're going to move on to item ten. Thank you. You said?
One.
We have one more? Which one? Oh, I'm sorry. Item ten, consider appropriations to need-based staffing across various departments. Ms. Banda?
Okay. So, yes, you already looked at this graphic. These are the positions that have gone through our new process. They have been vetted by H R, they have been vetted by finance, and they have been vetted by the city manager as far as justifications go for hiring these. And so the departments would like to request that we appropriate this total here, one point three seven eight, so that we can get these positions posted online and hopefully filled.
Okay.
Yes.
Council, any question? Yes.
Yeah, can I?
No, but you have a vote on this.
Okay, after we're done.
Yeah, go ahead. Do we need to go back to the other? No, no, we're good, we're good. So we're all, we're all on the same page, we're on ten. We're all on number ten, yes, sir. Okay, so let me ask a question. Anybody have any questions on item ten, as being proposed? One point three seven eight, this is, will be in the new budget. These are positions that are yet to be filled.
Correct.
We no questions, council? Do we entertain a motion to accept item ten, to consider appropriation needs-based staffing across various departments as presented by Ms. Banda? So moved. A motion by Councilmember Thompson, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Cornell, all those in favor indicated by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing unanimously.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and go to item number sixteen, so Ms. Banda can finish her presentation.
Okay. Council, we have a motion to suspend the rules by Councilmember Swanner. Any, any discussion, any comments? If no, entertain a second. I have a second for Councilmember Vasquez, all those in favor indicated by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, the motions are suspended. We are going to now skip eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. We will get back to that and we're going to go into miscellaneous, item sixteen. Ms. Banda will consider, she will present a consideration of possibilities of moving the actual determinate, determined contribution method to the city's retirement fund. Ms. Banda?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Swanner. You all have already seen a presentation on this in work session a couple of weeks ago. And just a little while ago, you heard from Chief Martz, who is our vice chair for the Odessa Fire Rescue Pension Board. So just for the public, I will just recap briefly what, what it is that we are wanting to do here. So currently, the city of Odessa maintains a fixed contribution rate to the Odessa Fire Rescue Pension Fund per employee. And that is fixed at twenty-eight percent. That percentage has been in place for a couple of years now, a few years. We saw some changes in that as we were working as a city and as a pension board to get the Odessa Fire Rescue Pension in a healthy position. Significant strides have been made. The pension is cash flow positive. They have a very acceptable amortization period, which means the period at which their liabilities for the members of the pension's retirement will be paid. And so they've made a lot of positive movement. What we're looking to do is move from a fixed contribution rate to an actuarial determined contribution method. In this method, rather than having a twenty-eight percent every year, we will have a professional third-party actuary come in, evaluate the different factors of the pension, the number of members, the ages of all the members, the current mortality rates, all of those things. And they'll tell us as a city what we need to contribute in order for that pension to have a healthy amortization. The Pension Review Board is the oversight agency for pensions, public pensions, and they have guidelines in place that cities have to comply with in order to be deemed a healthy pension fund. And so this, although not yet, is not yet being required by the Pension Review Board, there are some changes coming, starting in September one of twenty twenty-five, that although we're not subject to them yet, we haven't broken any of the forthcoming rules. This will help us ensure that we never get to a place where we might be at, at risk of an unhealthy pension. This is industry standard, although not in public pensions in Texas, but in regular pensions, private pensions, and also pensions across the, the country, practice this methodology. We would be one of the first cities in Texas to move to this methodology. And our pension is already very highly praised in the reform that has gone on within the pension. They're recognized across the state for those actions. And so this is just another way that we can, again, be recognized for practicing healthy pension performance measures. And it's also good for the pension. It's also good for the city. We had some models run that show will save about a hundred and thirty-two million dollars from a period of now to twenty sixty-three. Those same models show that we'll be at almost a hundred percent funded on that pension by twenty forty-eight. And right now we're about forty percent, which is lower than what we want to see and lower than what that pension oversight agency wants to see. So there's a lot of reasons that you've already heard over several presentations on why this is a good move, but I'll take any questions you have at this point.
Council, open up to the dice. Anybody have any questions? Seeing that there's no questions, any further comments? If no comments or discussion, consider a motion for, consider the possibility of moving to the actual determined contribution method to the city of Odessa Fire Rescue Retirement Fund.
So moved.
A motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Matha, all those in favor indicated by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you, Matha, thank you for all that work. Thank you. Thank you. Now we're going to go back in reverse, we're going to go back to item eleven, consider resolution approving the performance agreement by, agreement by and between the Odessa Development Corporation and D G K Incorporated. President of the O D C, Dr. James Kirk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Going to bring this to you, we brought this in special session yesterday on this extension of Mission Drado down to Business Twenty and working with D G, D J K Incorporated. And we voted to approve that yesterday and I'll get your input on that. Any?
Council, any, any discussion? So this is the road that runs around behind off of one ninety-one or Yukon.
Uh-huh, near Yukon, right, right behind, and goes south all the way down to Business Twenty.
It's the Mission, it's the Mission Drive that runs back up to Yukon and then down south across Bankhead to Twenty.
That'll help a, that'll help the traffic flow there. Let me read a little bit of a summary for public consumption. In this summary, D J K Incorporated plans to construct or cause to be constructed infrastructure improvements consisting of roadways with curb and gutter water improvements, sewer improvements, and other necessary infrastructure improvements on property near Yukon Road, Mission Drive, and East Odessa, Ector County, Millland County, Texas. This is base value, qualified expenditure. D G K has been approved for a financial assistance from the Odessa Development Corporation in amount of seven million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars on a reimbursed basis. So basically what this means, Dr. Kirk, is that they will be constructed and as they go in progress, they'll come back to the O D C and they will be turning in, it will be going through, based on the inspections by the city, once they sign off that they have completed different phases and stages of this construction, then they are then open to be reimbursed up to seven million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Just want to make it work for public consumption. Council, do we have any questions? Just so, just so the public knows, excuse me, just so the public knows, that road will, there's a new private school going back there, housing development, retail in the front, so that'll help traffic flow in that whole area, so there's going to be a thousand homes or roughly in there as well.
It also gives you now an alternative to Fodre headed north off Business Twenty.
Yes. So this will be directly east, northeast of Fodre and County Road one twenty-two. This is as you're driving east on Business Twenty, making a left on Fodre. And as soon as you pass the warehousing and the apartments, it's directly the county road to your right, that's County Road one twenty-two. The road in this development will be due east of there and then north of County Road one twenty-two, if anybody wants to know that. And then we'll go north and connect into Yukon. Yukon, which is south of one ninety-one. And it will be due southeast of the new development where the Bass Pro will be going. Just trying to give everybody a visual.
I didn't know if you had the maps in your packet.
We did, well, we, we've seen them a lot of times, so we can pretty much memorize them now. But, you know.
During our package as well.
Yeah. But for the public, you know, this is something that, you know, people ask and they'll be wondering, you know, what, what this road is. And this will bring in quite a bit of new jobs and development. And this does fit in with the O D C's mission. And so, because it does create a huge amount of jobs and, and brings in a lot of investment.
Mayor Hoven?
Yes.
On the part that says on a reimbursement basis, give me a little bit of understanding of what that means.
It would be, as, as the process is going on, they'll be submitting bills to the, to the city, to the O D C to, to be paid as, along the, along the process.
Which they'll be submitting?
Like, it won't be immediately upfront, it'll be as the process goes on.
For a total of that amount?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Same process we're using for the, for the complex, sports complex. Same one that we use for the infrastructures going into the Bell property for the same road curb gutters and water and sewer improvements. And it's also the same one that we, that O D C approved for the drainage for south of one ninety-one, east of the new Bass Pro, that is the drainage that is, texted out that will move water from that easement into the Playa. And then also the construction of the infrastructure for the roads, curb and gutter, sidewalks, water and sewer, that will be coming from south of one ninety-one, east, west of Yukon Road, back to the, to the Bass Pro shop. So this is a process that we've used, but also it'll all be contingent as the city also inspecting, they will be signing off that, and verifying that all this work has been completed. When it's satisfactory to the O D C, then the reimbursement will then start that process.
Thank you.
So we put in a lot of safeguards. It's just a matter of somebody walking in and just adding, putting in an invoice without an approved inspection process. It's something that has lacked in the past.
Gotcha.
In projects like this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And our attorney, Jeff Moore, had looked it over ahead of time and...
Yes.
Approved as well.
Yes, and that is, that is your lawyer that advises the ODC.
Counsel, we do have some speaker cards.
Do you need me to step aside?
Yeah, go ahead, sit down.
Before we get started on the speaker cards, I needed a clarification on one of the speaker cards, so I won't be sure to miss what you would like to speak on. Carmen Haynes, you designated your three minutes to TNVR. Could you please just give me some clarification?
Travis Niderman, please.
Okay. Tim Harry?
Good evening, Counsel. Just wanted to say, I'm one of the ODC board members. We, we had a pretty good, pretty good discussion over this topic yesterday. One of the things that I really liked about this, this is agreement that's good for Odessa and it's good for development on the, on the east side of town. We definitely need more of these types of projects to come through. Infrastructure is always a great thing. One of our jobs is to look at data and be prepared for our board meetings, and I do want to bring something public to everybody that we have, that, that actually did happen yesterday. Yesterday, before our ODC meeting was commenced, there was an email that was sent by one of our board members that was not in attendance. It was sent to the entire board. It addressed this one. It also addressed the, the next budget item that is in there. It was a flagrant violation of the Open Meetings Act, which is very important to us, and as has been said before, the hint of impropriety is a bad problem, and this is absolutely impropriety here. I do want there to be, I do have copies of that if, for counsel. I would like to pass that to you guys, so that you guys have that, please. I did blackout the email addresses itself. They do, they do title who they came from, and that was for the privacy of if that does get released to the public or when you guys do release that to the public, that email addresses don't turn into somebody's spam, spam folder. But if you guys need to see the original email on that, multiple people on council or multiple people in, in the city have that email as well. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Larry Robinson?
Give him one second. Give him one second, sir. Mr. Harry, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Get a little clarification in this email. There, are they two topics in here?
There are two topics in this email.
It, it begins with an apology.
It does begin with apology. It says, "I apologize..."
"I'm not attending. I'm traveling."
But I will not attend because I'm traveling.
"...some comments for your consideration. First, see how the board can approve or purchase..." So that's talking about another topic.
That's correct.
Topic in question to DDJK grant request has not been reviewed. I get rid of a compliance committee. I would think to compromise the process. Put, this was sent October 1, 1:00 PM?
This was sent at 1, right, right at about 1:00 PM.
When was the meeting?
Yesterday.
It was at 1:00 PM. Actually, I believe this email was actually sent, this was for the agenda. This was sent at 9:55 AM, so roughly 10 o'clock in the morning.
October 21st at 9:55 AM in the meeting for the ODC was convened at what time?
1:01 PM.
This was sent as a reply to the agenda that gets sent to the board by the city secretary and city attorney.
Let me ask this question. Since the meeting hadn't been convened or had, you have a board member that's discussing policy of the Odessa Development Corporation. He has tagged city secretary, city attorney, and the entire...
Board.
Board. Not a lawyer. Is this a violation of the Open Meetings Act?
It could very well be taken as, as a violation.
Both of you were on this, both of you were on this email. Did you bring it to attention to the president of the ODC?
We discussed it in, in...
We, we did discuss it in executive session. I just felt like this needed to be brought up public. I did file an inquiry with the Office of the Attorney General this morning. I am waiting on their response, but I did, I did start this process.
What was the inquiry?
I inquired as to what needed to be done and what the next steps were, and I made the report.
And that's the appropriate steps that needed to happen.
That's the appropriate steps.
That's what needed to happen.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Harry, can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
That's more germane to the topic on the floor. Did you support or oppose the project that we're talking about right now?
I absolutely supported this project.
And Mr. Harry, would you please give a copy of that email to Mr. Ms. Ramire that I'm sure will be asked about it.
All right. Is that, is that everything? Anybody else?
I don't have any other questions. I'm just trying to understand, don't, you know, none of us are lawyers, so we just don't understand if, we don't even know there was a violation.
No, I mean, there very well could be. And, and so, Mr. Harry contacting the AG's office is the proper procedure here. They, they are the experts and they will decide.
Well, you know, the thing is, is that we've been extensively, we have taken more classes about public meetings in coming into this council, what can and cannot be done because of what, and we inherited walking into this council, and that was the lawsuit that was done by Amy to the city of Odessa.
Yeah.
That protruded after the mass shooting in 2019, when the file was, the suit was filed by Amy against the city of Odessa in the end of the October. I'm not sure if it was January 30, 31, and it's been proceeded for about three years, if I'm correct. And so, and it was basically PIRs, but in through that whole process.
And Mayor, also on the email, you'll notice that no one's blind copying. And that's, usually when I send y'all things, and even when I said, "ODC board," I always blind copy you. I'll, I'll usually start here and go down, and then I'll put "counsel," and then Mr. Haney will usually be the one on, at the very end, the two. That's because all of you, you other six are blind copying. That wasn't done there, and there's a case out of Corpus Christi where there's actual, their tech, council was texting back and forth with each other.
You cannot do.
And, and so basically, they had a quorum. And so what Mr. Harry did was the proper thing to do. He mentioned it in executive session, and then he filed with the AG's officers. They are the experts, and they will tell us if an open meeting...
They will contact the city of Odessa or Mr. Harry. AG will contact the city of Odessa.
Their next step is to contact me.
Contact, contact Mr. Harry. So the, so the proper procedure was followed.
And reported.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm still not seeing, I'm just a little bit confused about, he's just stating his position because he's out of town.
What?
He did it to the entire board.
What the AG will have to determine is if that position being stated in a, basically a group email had an effect, had, had an effect of him being there and causing something to pass or fail.
And did we have, did we have an illegal quorum? That's my fear, is that, you know, that there may have been an illegal quorum. Had he blind copied everybody, then there would have been no trouble. I would have been like, nah, can't do anything. But this was the proper procedure.
What was it, Mr. Harry? Was there any back and forth between David or anybody?
There was no back and forth from anybody, as far as I know, as a reply. There was no discussion from anybody else on the board. It was just Mr. Buthan.
None of our knowledge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll...
Larry Robinson?
Don't take anymore.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Councilmembers. That email y'all were discussing a moment ago, I'll take a minute. I got one of those. I didn't take it as, as informative or anything. I, I knew David had tried to get a compliance committee together to review these things ahead of time, and there was a failure on that. And so I think maybe he had wished that it had gone to compliance committee, as I had too, but the form was not made, so it, so I think that was his only interest. I didn't see anything in it to alert me to anything different. But that's not what I'm here to talk about today. I sat yesterday, where Greg Canal sits today, on that side looking out today. I said here, yesterday I had a packet, much like you did, the same map that you guys had, we discussed a moment ago. And on that map, there's a bright yellow line. That's the city limits far east Odessa. The next line is a gray line. That's a road, a proposed road that is just inside that line. And then on either side of it is gold, and that gold is gold. That's commercial district on either side designated on that. You can't read it on your map because it wasn't very clear, but I inquired about it and got a copy, and it did say "commercial." So that's where taxes are made for the people of Odessa, not Midland. This is in Midland County. So this is Odessa city limits. That line denotes it, but it is entirely in Midland County. And the same property is owned on either side of the line, same ownership. So there, there's something that I think needs to be done before we move on with this. And I come to you today as a burden taxpayer to ask you to consider one thing before adopting 11 as a resolution, which will bear a cost of $7,834,000, which comes from taxes paid by the citizens of Odessa. The funding of the agreement is provided by the Odessa Development Corporation, which was founded to bring jobs and industry to Odessa, which will return the funding of projects in great multiples if properly used, and the same time reduce the future tax burden of residential taxpayers. Before this resolution is voted on, I ask that it be tabled or postponed for a short period of time, so that a promise of future performance be added to the resolution by the beneficiary permitting for the annexation of properties along the east side of the road in Midland County, which is under the same ownership as the west side of the road, or that the city first incorporate a small margin along the east side of this road to properly capture taxes to compensate the tax, the taxpayers of Odessa for this great expenditure in Midland County. The proposed road line along the easternmost boundary of Odessa city limits poses a potential loss of tax funds that would otherwise be returned in multiples to the city of Odessa as this quarter develops. The city must move the city limit outward marginally to capture the taxes from the new developments that otherwise would lie along the east portion of this new road, which is now outside the city limits and fully within Midland County. I do not believe it is intention of ODC founders to spend our Odessa tax funds for the benefit of modernization of commercial tax generating property in Midland County. The developer will be rewarded through this agreement. I find it equitable that the burden taxpayers of Odessa also be rewarded through the reception of taxes into the funding of Odessa tax coffers by annexing the adjoining property or a promise of annexing, allowing for annexing at a later date. Anybody question? Thank you.
Jeff Russell? As a reminder, every speaker will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'll kind of pick up where Larry left off. You know, very, very professional. Thank you. You know, my biggest concern with it was, you know, when you look at County Road 1290, which is the southern part of that proposed extension, that road is completely in Midland County. I cannot recall any instance where the ODC or the city of Odessa has ever paid to improve roadways or do any other infrastructure work in, in another county with really no possibility, because that, along that stretch of road is almost fully developed with commercial industrial type properties. And so I just, you know, I had a lot of indigestion, as, as I think Larry did, on some of the aspects of, of the fact that we're spending Odessa and Ector County dollars to improve infrastructure in Midland County, of which, in, in the case of 1290, we have almost no likelihood of every annexing that into the city unless we do a forced annexation, which we have not been, had a history of doing. So we're spending a considerable amount of Odessa taxpayer dollars with no possibility of any real return on it to improve that road in Midland County. I would really prefer to see Mr. Bushman and his group go to the MDC, which would have been the appropriate body, in my opinion, for that, for that improvement. So I'd just like you to consider that aspect, too. There, it wasn't broken down how much that segment of road cost was, but I think that's a real concern. I think it sets a very bad precedent. Thank you.
Dr. Kirk, what was the vote yesterday with the ODC?
It's, uh, Larry, yes, it was three to one. Larry asked to table the vote, couldn't get a second.
Okay.
And then we made a vote to go ahead and take it, go ahead and approve it for the simple reason, and, and one of the biggest things on, on our situation was compliance had not looked at this. Jeff Moore had looked at it and approved it, and, and when, when it's the attorney that looks at the infrastructure type things, that, that's what he deals with around the state all the time, and he approved it, that's what made the rest of the board good with not doing it. Melanie Holman abstained because she was, a firm, the firm may have had some dealings in the past, not her, but she abstained, so that made it a three to one vote yesterday. But the, the reason, I think, the, the board when hadn't agreed to this process was that we, the approval had been, the process of the, of the road construction was, was looked at detailed. Now, and Larry and City Manager Beckmeyer also had long discussion about that as well. It would be great to annex that in there to get to capture some of the tax dollars from that lower area. That's a very small part of the road that's just south of, of Bankhead Highway. The city limits are everywhere else on that road, the, the building of that road. But the, the, just south of Bankhead Highway to Business 20 is the portion that's in Midland County and not in Ector County. So, I mean, John Beckmeyer, we all agreed that it would be good to annex it if we could, but that's something down the road.
Yeah.
That's all we have. And Dr. Kirk, were you going to mention about Mr. Glassman talking about NDAs and the time?
Yes.
He's kind of under a time crunch.
And, and that was the other thing. Tom Glassman came and talked, we asked anyone from the DGJ, DGJK Incorporated to come up and talk to us about, there's some not named corporate agreements that they were working on getting done, and if they were, if this process is in the process of completing, completion in the near future, then they could get those completed. And, and if we couldn't get this done in a more timely manner, those might fall through and not, not get completed.
Thank you.
And those are in the city?
Sir.
Those?
That was from Tom Glassman.
Okay, yeah.
And, and he just came up and told us what kind of, the reason this got to be in a little pressing, because it fell in our special meeting, which was just, you know, kind of a short, short-nosed meeting to do this. And, and I understand Larry's concern about everything he said, but I was content that once, once Jeff Moore had reviewed it ahead of time, because some of the infrastructure roads we have to do can't, can't have to be designated to where it is.
It has to be in place.
It can't be just, just a residential road off to, off the, to the south or something.
Now, for a point for the public, Jeff Moore is...
He's the attorney that the ODC has, has utilized and the, and the city can, can utilize him as well. That is, his specialty is with this type, economic development throughout the state.
He's written the book on economic development.
If I'm right.
He's written the book.
If I'm right, some people in, in, in the room said he's the foremost expert in the state when it comes to economic development.
I would agree with that.
Now, now he's being called to question because we don't agree with the project. Let me ask this question to our city manager. We're talking about 1290. How much of a portion? What's the upside and the downside of this?
It's, it's a very small portion with a great upside, and I agree with, with Mr. Robinson. We should, and I will speak to development about trying to annex that, no doubt about it. However, the benefit to the public, and I mentioned this yesterday, is the flow that it gives from, from Business 20 all the way up to Yukon. Here's another artery heading north to what is becoming that very quickly, a major artery in our, in our town. And just the relief that it could give Fodre Road is hu, is a huge benefit. Having lived off that for the first six months that I was here, even with the widening and everything else, it needs to be relieved. that I was here, even with the widening and everything else, it needs to be relieved. You know, I have staff that comes in from Midland every day down Business 20, and they'll tell you, when they hit that bottleneck at Fodry, it's tight right there. This is, this, again, I want the tax, the sales tax off of that. The other thing that doesn't make it quite as urgent to do the annexation is, at this point, unlike Ector County, Midland County hasn't passed the sales tax out there in the county. Will we be able to do it without a forced annexation? Probably. I don't know. I'm going to lean towards people that say probably not. But what you're losing there for what you're gaining as far as access through there is a worthy trade-off, in my opinion.
I agree.
Now, I also know that, understand that there's NDAs involved in this, but the proposed projects that would come with this development, if this doesn't happen within the timeline, we would be losing that sales tax revenue that's going to be in the city of Odessa. Which is the crux of this, is we're saying the burden that's going to put on the sales tax, on the citizens paying sales tax. But if we don't meet this timeline and we miss out on these projects, then we're going to miss out on that future sales tax revenue.
And a quick question to the city attorney that I think I know the answer to. ODC, this money is funded through sales tax?
Yes.
Not through abhorrent tax at any point?
No, it's just sales.
And sales tax and city sales tax in Midland County will still go to the ODC?
Yes.
And city sales tax within Ector County and within the city of Odessa goes to the ODC, whether it's made by, whether it's paid by people that are local to Ector County and Odessa or people that are local to Houston. Okay. Because it's a little misleading to talk Ector, Midland, when you start talking about sales tax.
Yeah. That's a comment I was going to make, is that people keep getting confused that the property tax pales in comparison to the sales tax opportunities. And so that argument to me is not valid at all. It's inside of our EJT. You know, we all just, you know, it's there, we can do it. And whether we annex it later or not, we'll have to talk about that at a different time, but...
And everybody on the dice here knows that I'm probably the most anti-tax person in the county. However, I have a saying that I always say that I, about these monies is, the taxpayer's already been violated. Now it's up to the ODC to make good projects to increase the development of the town.
And what the city manager means by that, 1990, 1996, it was an election that took place that was a referendum by citizens to move one quarter cent from the hospital district to economic development. And that's what's meant. And it's the consumption tax. It's not just generated by Odessans. It's generated by anyone making purchases within the city of Odessa and Ector County. And that one quarter cent of every dollar spent goes to economic development. And that is distributed in quarterly, and ODC is cumulative annually averages anywhere from 12 to 15 million a year. And right now, there are about $80 million uncommitted money within that account, if I'm correct.
Right.
Councilman Hane?
So, we're always pushing the horse, you know, we should be pushing the horse before the cart, guys. That means you should annex this first, because you, basically, if you don't get this annexed, it belongs to Midland County. It doesn't belong to you. So they're not, you're not going to get the tax money. They are. So that's the easiest fix. Do that first, then you can have the land. You can have all of this.
One thing about Midland County, it does not have an EDC like Ector County does.
Brother, it still belongs to Midland County. Until it belongs to the city of Odessa, it's Midland County. No matter how you look at it, one thing you got to do is take the first step, annex the property, and then build what you want to build there. That's the easiest thing to do, and we're done with this. Instead of...
That was Larry's suggestion.
We're going to try to do this and hope Midland doesn't do it. So that's what I'm trying to say, guys. Everybody's rushing to get something done. I know you're in a rush. Get it done. Bring it before this council. You guys can call special session, whatever you want to do. We can help them that way. But if you're, right now, you're just shooting this thing all down the road, so.
Councilman Hane, I would call to question, but you're getting to tonight.
We have a call to question. We don't have a motion, so if there's no further discussion on this item, do we have any more cards on the, we're on item, item 11. Consider resolution approving the performance agreement by and between the Odessa Development Corporation and DJK Incorporated. This is a performance agreement with DJK Incorporated for infrastructure improvements near Yukon Road and Mission Drive. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swan. Are all those in favor indicate by a motion of aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have six to one. Thank you, James. Thank you, Dr. We appreciate it. Item 12, consider resolution approving agreement for sale and purchase of property located at 3215 West Murphy Street. Script is yours, too.
Mayor, this was not voted on yesterday. In fact, it was...
So we can go ahead and postpone this?
You can postpone.
We're still in due diligence.
Yeah, because I mean, I had nothing on it, so the public asked me, like, I'm not sure.
But Mayor, we do have somebody to speak, I believe.
Tim Harry?
Okay.
We can take...
On item 12.
Yeah.
Just table it.
Well, we can...
It's on the agenda. You can speak to it, even though...
I mean, you can't take any action on it.
And then we have to table it?
Once again, I came and brought some documentation along with me. We debated this in session
yesterday with Odessa Development Corporation. We talked about this. So I've got a couple of notes on here. There were some things that were discussed. There were some oppositions to everything that was, or to passing this, which is why it was tabled. Some things came out. They were talked about. But the main reason that it was tabled is that we were, we did not have the correct information, or we did not have information that was being asked for. After the meeting yesterday, I got on the phone with the person in charge of the inland port. I asked some questions. And a couple of the questions that I asked were regarding the documentation. One of the big things that were talked about that was a problem is that they did not have the financials of the gentleman that was involved. I asked, I asked the man about this, or I asked Mr. King about this. He emailed those financials to, yes?
It wasn't tabled.
I'm sorry. Apologies. It was, it, what did we, we didn't table?
We made a motion to go through the due diligence.
We made a motion to go through the, I'm sorry, we did make a motion to go through the due diligence. But the main reason that we made the motion to go through the due diligence was because we did not have the information. But what I have, but what I want to point out is, we did have that information. That information had been provided. It had been provided multiple times, both to Tom Mansky and to other members of our committee. It had not been provided to the entire board. It took me 24 hours worth of time for somebody to come up with the information that was asked for. The information that we asked for, that we came back and asked for information that we've already had in our hands, that it was not presented before the board. And I do want to point out that this is, this is not okay. This is not what we're supposed to do. We're not supposed to be playing politics. We're not supposed to be playing games with this. This is a, this is a real estate deal, and these things are supposed to go, not necessarily quickly, but we're not supposed to be dragging our feet in the process of doing it. We're not supposed to cost somebody a deal. This is a problem. This has been going on since I was, since I've been on this board with this particular, with this particular project that has been up and down multiple times. The property is out in the public. We've talked about the property. Environmental studies are here. Phase one and phase two core studies have been done. The project was put on the open market, was bid. One of the other objections was that we did not have an appraisal value. Well, the best appraisal value that you can get is when that thing goes on the auction block and a whole bunch of people bid on it. There were four bidders on that particular project. So all of the objections that were raised, and all of the problems that were had, could have absolutely been taken care of yesterday if people had come prepared for that meeting. And that's all I wanted to put out. Thank you very much.
Tim, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So if Tom Mansky had the information at the financials, and did he have the information on the samples, on the environmental sample?
If he had asked for it, he would have had that. And that was presented. I had that email information on, I had asked the specific questions about environmental studies back in September. I took that environmental study, the entire 300-page report of an environmental study. I took that with me on vacation in September, when I took a few days off of work. And I went through that entire environmental study. The land is clean. It absolutely indicates that the land is clean, that we don't have problems with it. There's tons of things that keep going on. Emails were sent to both Peggy Dean, Tom Mansky had conversations with Mr. King about his financials. David Bhutan even made a phone call and discussed financials with Roger King. So the due diligence was done, and we're playing games.
Yeah, that was my question. Why wasn't the information put in the ODC packet? I mean, it does seem like it was...
It should have been. It absolutely should have been, other than the fact that it took almost 45 minutes to print out this stupid page.
When was the date of the environmental study? When was the date of the environmental study? What was the date?
The date of the environmental study was March 12th of 2024 was the updated version of it. Originally, there was one that was put out that was dated from 2020. The second phase of the environmental study was just, was passed back through from 2000, and I believe it was 2020, September 11th of 2020 was the phase two. That was the core samples that were taken from that. That's a fairly expensive process and a lengthy process to send an environmental app. Those were put back through. Those came back clean. So there really isn't a point in pulling a second set of cores. When your updated environmental study says that there has not been any sort of an action on the phase one, there really isn't a reason to go back and go do a phase two, in my opinion.
Counselor, do we not have to have a certified appraisal, since the city ultimately is buying this piece of property? We really should. I thought we had to always have an appraisal. We need to. We will on this. I was going to tell you... I understand that that hadn't been done, so he's incorrect about that. Number two, do you have, do you have a copy of the Union Pacific contract, rail contract?
I talked directly with Mr. King about that.
Ask if you have a copy of the contract.
I do not have a copy of the contract.
Is it assignable?
It, from what I've been told, it is assignable.
Well, I'll tell you what. I'm Santa Claus. Believe it.
I mean, I...
I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Anybody can tell you.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I've not been given any reason to believe that there's been an issue.
So just wanted to let you know, we were never given what Mr. Harry is describing that Mr. Mansky had. So therefore, legal, we did not know to put it into the packet because we were never provided it.
And that is a defense to legal.
So legal was never made, were never given into it back in March? So you said you had a date of March 12th, 2024?
I have a date of March 12th of 2024. Yes, sir.
And so since then, there was never that given to legal? And at that time, let me ask this question. In March 12th of 2024, I knew previous ODC had removed the legal department from the city of representing the ODC. Was that during that time?
Mr. Mansky was doing the agenda at that time.
So, but you weren't the lawyer?
No.
You were representing, even though you sat on the dice, you were not representing the ODC.
That's right. It was strictly Mr.
The representative of the ODC was Jeff Moore, and he was, in every meeting that ODC had, he was sitting in his office in Austin, Texas.
Yeah, Richardson.
Oh, Richardson.
Dallas Metroplex, Borthworth.
Okay.
Mayor, just for a point, we're beating a dead horse here. They got a motion on the table to Mr. Hane's point. He thinks you can get in the cart before the horse. In this case, it looks like the horse is before, is...
That was, that was on the DJK.
Yeah, I know. But I'm saying, all I'm saying is, I know how critical, I know personally how critical that rail spur contract is with Union Pacific. I know how they can change their monopoly, and it is a critical, critical piece of this, of this project. I studied the project at length.
Very much so.
And in the contract, the whole MO UK went in one way and came out another way, and it was all changed. And they wanted you to sign that contract as is where is. The guy's in bankruptcy. He's desperate, and he wanted a million dollars. That's real money?
No, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think the site that just is the ones in bankruptcy, I think the...
They're representing him.
The property, the property that they're buying went into bankruptcy. And so, okay. I thought you were saying that Mr. King was...
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm...
The property is in bankruptcy.
And part of my point is, is there are, there are four bidders that did bid on this property in a, in an understanding that that contract would be in place, and in an understanding that the contract with Union Pacific is active and is valid. The consultant that was hired by Roger King to do this research, and Roger King has not lied to me a single time. And I will absolutely tell you that he has not lied to me. I have, however, been shined on by members of the economic development team as far as getting information and getting things out of them. So I really do trust Roger on this process when he says that, yes, it was put in place, and yes, it is good. And if four other people decided that they wanted to bid something pretty close to what's up there, that says a lot.
Let me ask you, Dr. Kirk?
Yes.
What was the due diligence that the ODC took a motion on?
We had quite a lengthy motion yesterday on, I don't know exactly, Dan, how much I can talk about. Is the PSA out? Is it public?
It was in the packet.
It was in the packet, yeah. It was in the packet.
I don't want to talk to anything that's not, that I'm not able to, but most of our meetings have been in closed session, but...
Yeah, but basically, what it was is that Melanie made the motion, and she essentially said that she wanted to go back and look at the PSA. This is the terms that we would do. The million dollars would be fully refundable. Maybe we could do up to $100,000 that would not be refundable. And for the second bidder, apparently. But we also wanted to see about doing a phase one, phase two environmental, and also have someone actually come and do a survey on it, because the survey's...
Survey and appraisal.
And appraisal. Survey was like 2004.
That's understandable.
And survey would typically be done in a top process anyway.
But you also have some environmentals that were in March of 20...
We were not ever told this.
Well, I think we can probably get those turned over.
That was very...
In our session, in our session, we were told that it was 2004 or '05 environmental, and then 2009.
Yeah. I said at that point in time was not accurate.
Within, within, within this contract, which would be page three, item J, due diligence report shall meet all reports, documents, studies, analysis, other written information delivered by seller or buyer or obtained by buyer with respect to property, including results of physical inspections, engineering studies, engineering drawings, specifications, surveys, hazardous material reports, soil tests, site plan, feasibility studies, market studies, architectural plans, specifications, drawings, title reports, permits, approvals, authorizations. Whether the obtained governmental authorization, third party shell or work products generated by or for buyer in connection with the property. Is that something close?
And we were given 14 to 30 days to have this done, and it was, and the PSA is saying one million dollars is non-refund, it could be given up, and we were not going to accept that. That is the single biggest reason our board would not accept that. Not, not for these other things that we may not have been given, and all of our information we should have been given. But the board is working on the due diligence now to get that in the right way, to get it correct and approve it, as soon as we can.
Yes, sir. And I just, I wanted to point out that we're, that the problem is, is the lack of communication from our contractor, which is the Odessa Chamber of Commerce, and with that group. And that is a big part of the problem, that they have not gotten us what we've asked for. I, it took me, I started making a request for a list of projects that has been done by ODC since 1996 to present. It should have been a really easy list to have gotten taken care of. I started asking for that list in April. I did not get that list until two weeks ago in my emails from Mansky.
I can tell you, the first one in 1996 was the telemarketing.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
Go waste of time for time.
Okay. So, anything else?
Do you have any more questions for me, Ian?
No, I don't. Counsel, does anybody have any? Okay, this is just postpone? No, we're going to move on.
Do we have to make a motion to vote on that?
No. This is postpone. There's no action. There was no action, and it's postponed. We're going to move on to item 13. Let's be brief. Come on.
Up until 72 hours for this meeting, we had no documents, no financials, nothing. It was, everything was behind closed doors. We carried no documents out. We had nothing until the 18th, when it was sent to us. We had very little time to interview. There had been attempts to get some compliance meetings that failed. And so this... There had been attempts to get some compliance meetings that failed, and so this came to us.
Mr. Robinson, we hear in a lot of things what you guys are not getting done. Is there an issue in communication?
Pardon?
You said that you had no documents. You had.
It was all behind closed-door meetings. The documents were kept back there. We didn't take anything out.
I didn't ask you whether you took any documents. I asked a question, and I'm trying to understand it because I don't understand the point that you're making. Let me help me here. What I'm understanding, you had no documents or you took no documents out?
There were documents present. We did not carry the documents out.
Mayor, what he's telling you is basically what Mr. Harry said a while ago is that you have not seen any financials from Mr. King. You have not seen any from.
And I don't think those would have been released to us outside of the private quarters.
Right, but nothing was given to you by Mr. Mansky in there.
Yeah.
That's what he's saying in the executive session.
So, how long has this project been ongoing?
Pardon?
How long has this project been ongoing that, that ODC has considered it?
I don't, I don't recall, probably, probably almost since the, probably February, somewhere in there, maybe.
You don't recall?
Pardon, I don't recall.
You've not seen anything?
Very, very, I haven't, we haven't carried anything out of there. We've seen.
That's not the question I asked. Have you not seen anything on site logistics in the inland port? Have you not reviewed? Have you not seen?
I can recall. I can recall, but I have seen what was in the packet, but we didn't get our packets until briefly before. And the survey is, the topographical survey is completely aired and marked over. It's not good. There is no out to survey. All the ground assets are wrong. The personal property has the wrong ownership on them. Everything on there's got to be gone through. Some, and we. I believe, I do not know why this was a special meeting to get this done.
That, you're on the board? You need to ask that to your, to your president and your board, not the city council. We don't set your meetings. You are a member of the ODC.
I do not set the meetings, and.
I'm sorry?
I don't, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. We're good. We beat that dead horse still is gone. There's been no action taken other than the due diligence by the board, so we've spent more time on this than we needed to. Okay, now we're gonna go on to some, and get some business done. We're gonna move on to Item 13. Discuss and consider amending Section 8-1-6 entering restroom for opposite sex in the City Code of Ordinance. Mr. Begman.
Okay, this is something that we've talked about several times. We have, last time we talked about it, I presented a ordinance that had basically withstood legal pressure for less of, lack of a better word. Councilman Haney has taken that and worked with some good men here that are here tonight. And this is something that, at this point, I'd like to turn over to Councilman Haney to speak to.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have Jonathan Sands here. I'd like to see if he can, would come up and stand up here, and he can answer all the questions that are on this ordinance.
John, just introduce yourself, sir. Full name and, you know, organization you're with?
And while he's coming up here, they did address some things. While some was added to the ordinance that were very short ordinance that I brought the other day. One thing very important that was added also is a severability clause where if anything is found to be elude, not in keeping with the law or unconstitutional, it doesn't affect the rest of the ordinance itself. Also, I really like the way that they talked about the signage. And in my mind, which is much smaller than Mr. Covey's or Mr. Sands here, it treats it somewhat to the effect enforcement in non-city properties isn't a lot different than a no trespassing sign.
So, John, the one that is Mr. Haney's that was updated, that's the one that was sent today?
Yeah.
The updated one?
And that's what was passed out to the council just now.
Is that a revival? Is that what this is a revival?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's very close to the one that's in your packet, but it was updated.
Yeah.
And sent to me late yesterday.
There's a lot of red in here.
It's not in, it's not in our format, so that's something to keep in mind, counsel. If you should decide to approve this, Tina will have to go back and we'll have to format it.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, you'll have to be formatted, because the one that you have in your packet is the one that is correctly formatted. Did I say that wrong? Yeah, okay. Now I'll shut up.
But it doesn't have the rep. Okay. But it's the wrong one. If anyone presents.
Well, the one that's formatted is in here.
No.
This is the formatted one.
The one that's in your packet is formatted. The one that's on the computer is formatted.
The one here on the screen is formatted. This is not.
That, this one that you have that was passed out to you a while ago, it's not formatted.
Yeah, this is not, the one in here is.
Yes, sir. That's right.
Mr.
I could say something else.
Honorable Mayor Hoven and distinguished members of the city council, thank you for having me this evening. My name is Jonathan Sands. I'm a licensed attorney in the state of Texas, and I'm also president of a nonprofit organization called Texas Values. We specialize in this area of law and policy that you're gonna be discussing in regards to Item 13 tonight. Just as a matter of rules and housekeeping, as a lawyer, I like to follow the rules. Do I have three minutes, or?
No, I don't.
Okay. And I won't.
This is actually your agenda.
Okay, I'll be courteous of your time, and I know there's other business, but like to, that way I have an idea of when I need to move quicker or not. So, I am happy to take questions, too. If at any point there's something I say you want me to stop, and we can go over some things. A little bit more about my background. I specialize in the area of law and policy, particularly at the state legislature, but also in city councils, school boards. I've worked on court cases that deal with constitutional law, many that relate to some of the aspects that might come up in Item 13. I've worked on those cases at the US Supreme Court, Texas Supreme Court, and many of the lower federal courts and state courts. In some of those cases, I have been the lawyer advocating on behalf of a client or a particular matter. Sometimes I've played a secondary role. Sometimes I've merely been someone who would explain to the media about what's going on and the issues. We often do that as it relates to cases before the Texas Supreme Court that the Attorney General's Office is involved in. So, I'm a graduate of the University of Houston Law Center, and I've been licensed in the state of Texas since 2003 as an attorney. The organization that I lead, we often meet with elected officials to help them sort through these matters and try to come up with solutions. Primarily at the state legislature, but certainly in city councils. Anything you see that's come up on these issues over the past 10 years, including the ordinance in Houston, many people called that the bathroom ordinance a few years ago. That was an ordinance that the mayor at that time wanted to require all of the city businesses to allow men into the women's restrooms, boys into the girls' bathrooms, and things of that nature. That was a ballot measure that failed by 6139. Our organization was involved in helping the public understand that, but obviously, we also advocated against that policy at the time. The Privacy Act, which came up in 2017 at the state legislature, which had the, was to operate in the reverse. To, that way, people could sort these out, and the government would handle things in government buildings. We were involved in that issue. I want this council to know, too, you're not the only city and local government that's involved in this type of issue. It's actually become quite active. The city of El Paso passed an ordinance earlier this year in January that would require not just public but private businesses, if they have a standalone bathroom, to put up a sign. They called it a gender-neutral sign. The city of Austin, for many years, has had a city ordinance that requires public and private buildings and entities. I've even seen this in churches, where if they have a single-use bathroom, that they have to allow people of whatever sex or identity to enter, but it has to be single designated if it's just one stall for single use. Also, Dallas City Council has voted on issues like this. City of San Antonio, I don't know if they voted on this, but they have a new policy now where they're placing tampons for women in the men's and boys' bathrooms. That's a policy that's gonna start in a couple of weeks, mainly through their libraries. That's been talked about a little bit. Carroll and Keller ISD, these are school boards that are in the North Texas area. They've recently passed policies that make it clear that you designate restrooms and showers and locker rooms based on biological sex. I will say that a lot of this issue has come up because of pressure from the federal government, primarily during the current Biden administration and the Obama administration. That's why you see a lot of school districts involved in this discussion, because there's been a history of those two administrations through the Department, Federal Department of Education, coming up with rules and guidelines to say, you must do things this way, or you're gonna lose your federal funding. That issue's been heavily litigated recently. There's been several federal court cases that have ruled in favor of local school districts, including Carroll ISD, that have said the federal government cannot enforce such a policy. And here's one of the main reasons why. Some of this issue has been playing out more recently because of a US Supreme Court case called Bostock a few years ago. This was a Title VII discrimination case, and it did deal with issues of sex and gender identity. But it did not deal with the issue of Title IX, which is what you see come into play a lot in bathroom, showers, and locker rooms, particularly in public schools. But it could relate to circumstances where you have educational programs and sports items at some of the local city pools and aquatic center and things of that nature that are part of this community. But I want to, since you've allowed me a little time, I think it's important for y'all to know, because you may get some of these questions, you may be thinking about them, maybe I'm answering them now, or someone else might ask you. But it's been stated a lot, this Bostock Supreme Court decision, where people have tried to say, they made a decision about sex being redefined as the issue of sexual orientation and gender identity, but it was only in employment context. They've tried to convince people that it also applies to Title IX, where you see these issues of sports, and you see these issues of opportunities for women come into play. So, and I can provide this to y'all, but I want to quote here from the Bostock decision. This is on page 31, 590 U.S. This is from 2020 US Supreme Court case, 6-3 decision. The US Supreme Court addresses this concern, thinking people may come up with this. The Supreme Court has not ruled specifically in a case yet on these type of matters, because many people believe Title IX, the definitions of sex and these classifications are very clear already in federal law. There's no reason for them to be relitigated. But the Supreme Court, when this issue came up, here's what they said on page 31 of the Bostock decision. And under Title VII itself, this is what some people that were concerned of how this decision would be applied. They say sex-segregated bathrooms, locker rooms, and dress codes will prove unsustainable after our decision today. This was the court saying that folks that did not want to see a change in this policy overall as it relates to redefining sex were afraid it would then be applied to showers, locker rooms, and restrooms, where you would have to allow biological men to go into women's restrooms, or biological boys to go in the girls' bathrooms, okay? So, the court says, US Supreme Court, "But none of these other laws are before us. We have not had the benefit of adversarial testing about the meaning of their terms, and we do not prejudge any such question today. Under Title VII, too, we do not purport to address bathrooms, locker rooms, anything of the kind. The only question before us is about the employment situation." So, oftentimes, that's what people that are against such things that you're considering in this ordinance, they will try to tell you that the Bostock Supreme Court decision on Title VII applies to Title IX. The Biden administration has tried to do that. The Supreme Court has already spoken on that issue and said that is not accurate. When the Trump administration was handling this issue, they put out guidance letters. I also want you to be aware of what is our state doing on these type of issues when it's about whether or not, how we're gonna decide these issues of what happens in bathroom, showers, and locker rooms. So, I do have a handout, and I'm a little short on copies. That is my fault, but if the secretary hands these out, you'll want to see this. This is a letter from Attorney General Ken Paxton about the issue of Title IX in bathrooms, showers, and locker rooms, and things of this nature, where he makes it clear what the law is on these issues. He talks about Title IX. Often, he talks about what we see the Department of Education doing and how there are concerns about that, and that is a misleading application of the law. What I'm getting at is the ordinance that's before you is within your power to pass and make a decision. There are other small and local governments that are doing the same thing. Now, whether or not they decide to sort of be on one side or the other, there is activity across the state in a number of other small governments. And so, your timing on this is really meeting this issue of where it is now. Governments looking at this issue and saying, we need to be clear about how we're handling things before something happens, because we know this is a question. My point to you is some of the water has been muddied, which allows you to have the necessity to have something clear in law now, because the federal government and other people, activists, have tried to suggest that the law is different than what Title IX has always been, the definition of sex, right? And that's an issue of discrimination in showers, locker rooms, and bathrooms. I also want to be clear that what you're doing today is a part of your duty. When there is a question, whether it's in culture, and look, whether you consider yourself Republican or Democrat on these issues, this is what's going on, right? It's a matter of getting the law accurately. It's a matter of safety and privacy. The state legislature has looked at this issue 10 years ago, almost, seven years ago in 2017, right? We've seen these issues come up, and so I think it's, it makes a lot of sense that the government here today has realized it's time to make a decision on this. Another thing I want to mention to you, and as a lawyer, I think it's important for me to make you aware of this, because your city attorney may be aware of this, other people may be talking about it. Texas Association of School Boards is talking about that. And again, a lot of these things have played out in the context of a public school, right? Where we see the issue of showers and locker rooms and restrooms be a little bit more of a concern. But there are plenty of those type of facilities within your control at the public level, and so it applies. There is a US Supreme Court decision from last term, I believe. This is a member of our team, Jonathan Covey, that I'm referring to. On Loper Bright Enterprises versus Raymond, and I'm happy to produce an electronic version of this case. This came out of New Jersey, a 6-3 US Supreme Court case. And I'm gonna get a little bit deeper with y'all on the law, but I, I know this is an important issue, and I know you want to get it right. And I know a lot of times what the questions are gonna come, and people have said before. One of the reasons why the Department of Education at the federal level has had such a role is because they want to convince people that the definition of sex can be changed, or they have the authority to do that. And if people aren't sure, you refer back to what the Department of Education says. What is a local school district or maybe a local government to do when the sort of government above them says, this is what you're supposed to do, and this is what the law is, if there's any confusion, right? So, for many years, these federal agencies, like the Department of Education, have been given a lot of credibility or deference if there were questions. Well, what does the Department of Education say about how these matters should be handled and what the law is for right now, right? However, the Loper Bright Enterprises versus Raymond case, US Supreme Court case, as I mentioned from last session, had a tremendous impact on this. There is a legal concept called Chevron deference, which relates back to a federal, a US Supreme Court case with Chevron in the title of that case, and it stood for the courts giving a certain amount of deference to federal agencies, right? When, and you may be familiar with this, I see a couple of heads nodding.
This was, this was really, I think the public got a little view into it when it was the confirmation for Supreme Court Justice Kavanaugh.
Right.
And he referred because he was a Chevron-type judge.
Yep.
And so, this is basically where the Congress has given more authority to OSHA to be able to make law, basically superseding Congress.
That's right. You could state it that way. But in the Loper case, the US Supreme Court said, we're done with Chevron deference.
Yeah.
Okay, what does that mean? Every time the Department of Education, some federal administration or agency says, no, 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 this is what the law is, if anyone suggests that there's a difference or some confusion, that's gone. What does that mean? We go back to the text of the law, which Title IX, we've always had the same definition of sex. We know what it means, right? Difference between male and female, and it's about the biological sex, not issues of gender identity or sexual orientation. I also have here, and again, a little short on copies, but forgive me. This is the final judgment from Reed O'Connor in a federal court case here in Texas, Fort Worth Division. Worth Division. With the state of Texas involved in this particular issue, there's a statewide injunction in place, not just in Texas, but 26 states that are a part of this, where that Department of Education interpretation about sex that would certainly be used, I would imagine, to tell you what you're doing with this ordinance is unconstitutional, is going to be problematic. Okay? So the best weapon, the best evidence, the best proof, the best argument, if you will, that the opposition might have to you passing this ordinance has been said by the U.S. Supreme Court, "We're not going to let that play out that way, and it won't be interpreted." All right? That is not the controlling law. In the state of Texas, or 26 states, okay? So where do you fall back on? You have the right, the power, and the authority to make this decision. It's a constitutional decision. It's reached a point in our country, whether people feel one way about it or not, to make it clear. Maybe before, decades ago, it was very clear. We didn't have to have an ordinance that was this specific, but now we do. And a lot of it is because people are trying to change the way these things are handled. They want to create confusion, or they want things to be handled differently, and they want people to question whether or not it's okay to still say, "We're going to have men's restrooms, we're going to have a women's restroom, we're going to have boys and girls, and it's going to be based on biological sex." So that's where you are today. So there's a little bit of history in there for you to know. You're not alone. It's not like you're going to be the only city that's involved in this type of matter or this subject matter. And you've got direction from our Attorney General on things related to this issue. You've got federal judges that have weighed in on issues of this nature and similar to this subject. The law and the authority of the state of Texas and many other places in the country are on your side if you pass this ordinance, all right? Let's look at the language, just so we can walk through it together, and we're clear about what we're doing. And am I correct, Mr. Jones, there's a new draft, is that right?
There is.
Because I don't know if that's hyperlinked in the one that I'm seeing.
It was updated this afternoon, but the council has, it's not formatted correctly.
That's fine. Are you at liberty to speak to what maybe a few of the differences are?
Just primarily, I have to be reminded.
That's okay. And I'm not trying to put you, I think I have some awareness of that, but I wanted to, I didn't want to be out of place.
Let me answer this question, Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Which copy do you have? Do you have the same copy that we're seeing here in front of us in our?
I'm looking at the one online, but it is my understanding that there was.
There was, and it's pretty much the same.
Yeah.
But you go to H, private right of action, under number one, and you go to against any person, and what I have, what's in y'all's packet, is against any person who violates or intends to violate the provisions of this ordinance. Okay? What we received this afternoon was against any person who knowingly or intentionally enters or uses a restroom in a public or private building in the city of Odessa designated for the exclusive use by persons that do not correspond to his or her biological sex, except in the circumstances described in subsection E, or who intends to engage in such conduct.
Right.
So that's the biggest change there.
Okay.
And of course, the second one that we got this afternoon, we'll have to format it, we'll have to, there's a couple of places we're going to have to, but.
It's easier to go off of this one.
So.
Yes. That's the change.
Yeah. I want to give you some insight and shed some light on a few important parts of this. First of all, when it comes to defining sex, public building restrooms, I want to look at those restrooms as any facility area designed, intended, commonly used for personal hygiene, changing clothes, performance of bodily functions, and it gives some examples. Toilets, this is, this is in definitions, section B. Okay. Just so people understand that we're talking about public spaces, changing rooms, locker rooms, showers, right? It goes beyond just your normal, maybe your typical restroom, like you have over here, on this floor.
And one of the changes that we would have to make under B1 would be city of Odessa. It's just a blank.
Yeah, just, it just says.
It's just, yeah, we'll have to clean it up, but that's very doable.
Okay, so the city and their enforcement mechanism here, this will be considered civil trespass, and there'll be a civil penalty, okay? I also want to make sure people are aware, there are exceptions. We understand there are certain circumstances where, like under subsection E1, if a person, a minor, is under the age of 12 and is accompanied by an adult of the sex designated by the restroom. In other words, I'm a man, if I am going to go into the men's restroom and I have my five-year-old daughter with me, that's an exception. We see a changing area and things of that. Sometimes it's the mother bringing her little boy into the bathroom, okay? This is what this exception is for. For law enforcement or other governmental regulatory purposes. Can understand that. If the government has some type of code enforcement, there's a law enforcement issue, they're allowed to enter the restroom that is different from their sex. The purposes of a medical emergency and assistance, health or safety, custodial and maintenance repair, the cleaning person, whoever has to go in to make sure everything is working there, okay? I want to make sure, too, we, people will ask, well, you know, "How are we defining this issue?" Biological sex is determined based on what your birth certificate says at the nearest time of birth, all right? I want to make sure, too, you're aware, DPS has addressed an issue related to this. For a number of years, they were allowing some process through an Austin court to change your biological sex on a, on your driver's license, without what some people feel was not a real exhaustive process. But recently, DPS has come back and said, "We're not doing that anymore," for a variety of reasons. So they're going back to the same rule. I want y'all to know, too, you know, this is not language that's coming out of nowhere, it's not anything that anyone hasn't seen, or that's, you know. The state of Texas has a law, y'all may be aware, Senate Bill 15, and also before that, that relates to colleges and also K through 12 schools, where boys can compete in boy sports, girls and girls sports, men and men's, women's and women's at the collegiate level. And that standard there is also the birth certificate nearest birth, okay? So you know you've got a consistent standard that you're using. We also see the city of Tennessee, excuse me, the state of Tennessee.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Why the necessary language, nearest time of birth? Why, I mean, you brought it up in the case, it's also with DPS. Why is that?
I think over time, there's been some concerns that when you see some type of change on a birth certificate at a later time, of whether, what the standard was, and if there's any consistent standard on how that's being done. It's a matter of accuracy, right? And not someone, for whatever reasons, and maybe without the participation of.
In this time of day, can somebody's birth certificate be altered in identifying their biological sex?
There are a variety of things that are happening in our state right now, where they're being changed. There are some courts that are sort of participating in that, but there are questions about whether or not they're following a consistent or a legal standard that can hold up.
I understand.
So, okay, so that's the exceptions under E, civil penalties, civil trespass. I want to explain the concept of private right of action, okay? So this ordinance can be enforced with civil penalties through the government for public buildings, okay? All right? So that is where the enforcement lies, is buildings that are controlled by the government. Now, there's also a mechanism called a private right of action, all right? That means any private citizen can enforce this ordinance, not only just for public buildings, but also private buildings. This helps you from a constitutional perspective, because I think the law is, the ordinance is very strong, and there's a severability clause. But if for some reason, a court were to say, "Well, we think the government's ability to enforce this with civil penalties and so on is unconstitutional," that would still leave the private right of action in place, okay? And if you indulge me for a minute, the way that constitutional law works, and you're probably fairly aware of this, you only have an action for violation of your constitutional rights when the government does something. This ordinance allows for a civil private right of action, someone who is not a member of the government, to go into court and say, "I'm aware of this violation, and I want to enforce it."
John Q. Public.
You could, you could describe it that way, I believe.
Jonathan, is there another law that we have for an example of that?
Yes.
That has been to Supreme Court.
Yep. The Texas heartbeat law, which y'all may or may not be familiar with, was passed in 2021. That was a law that I was a part of, that process, where the private right of action mechanism is in that law itself. That issue was taken up by the U.S. Supreme Court, back and forth. Texas Supreme Court has looked at these things, and it's continued to survive and to continue to be in place, and not have it knocked down as unconstitutional. So that's an important part of this, that way. Again, I believe that this ordinance would stand up against any type of constitutional scrutiny, but if there were a circumstance where it didn't, as it relates to the government, you would still have the ability of private citizens to enforce it.
Mr. Sands, on the private enforcement of this, how would it be proven when you go to court to this? I mean, would that citizen have to have pictures, or what? Because if there's nothing to prove, somebody could just say, "I saw, I saw that guy go in there," but how is that?
It would be, that would be an evidentiary issue for the court to look at, right? I mean, but obviously, the law says that the definition of sex is based on a government document that you have, primarily the birth certificate nearest birth. So I imagine that would be something important for someone to produce in a civil case to show that. Were there any other questions?
In those cases, more times than not, the person that you would take the civil action against is not going to deny going in there. The point, it's to make the very point that I can go in there. So it's a valid question, but not one that's probably going to come up. I'm going to say I went in there because you can't stop me.
Any other questions?
Can I go ahead and continue?
I believe I've covered all the matters that I believe are pertinent at this time. If you think of anything else, I'll be here on the front row, ready to answer any questions. Thank you for taking this measure up. As I mentioned before, the timing matches up with what we see going on in our culture. This will be a benefit to the privacy and safety of your citizens. And also, some may ask, and I'm not aware of all the details in this community, "Well, has there been something like that happen in Odessa? Why should we wait? We know there's a lot of activity around this issue in our state, whether it's Academy, whether it's Target, whether it's the state Capitol, government buildings and private buildings, we know these issues continue to come up. And unfortunately, I think sometimes people are provoking those things. But I think you're right to not wait until you see those things add up and someone gets hurt. You're making it clear now, and I'm happy to help and take any questions."
Okay. We can go ahead and allow a public comment.
As a reminder, the speakers will have three minutes to speak.
I come as a private citizen, and I want to speak in favor of this ordinance. I do believe this is something that Odessa needs. It's really sad that we actually do need an ordinance to protect our kids. Keeping my kids safe in sports, keeping my kids safe in the activities that they attend and do is absolutely necessary. I don't think that all of these people intend to be bad, but there are a lot of bad apples in that, and that it presents a lot of opportunities for there to be big, big, big problems. And if we can do our part to protect our kids, that's what's the most important thing. Thank you very much.
Good evening to both the City Council and to my fellow Odessans. My name is Gail Norris. I have lived here all my life, and for over two years, I have served the people of Odessa as the city's Human Resources Clerk. In my off time, I serve on the board with Out in West Texas, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that seeks to educate the public about what it is to be transgender and to provide necessary resources to transgender individuals. I am also transgender myself. It is as an advocate and as a citizen that I want to remark on the proposed amendment to City Ordinance 816. I'm a public servant at heart. I want to improve my community and ensure that people within it are provided for and safe. Simply put, I believe that this ordinance will neither provide nor protect anyone. Other concerned citizens have already pointed out, the last time this was brought before the people, that regardless of its legality, this ordinance cannot be effectively enforced. Police officers cannot monitor every bathroom in every building, and leaving this job to citizens, as would be the case in this ordinance, only creates an environment in which neighbors betray neighbors for the crime of looking or being different. There is no reputable statistical evidence that transgender people commit violent or sexual crimes any more often than the general population, inside or outside of bathrooms, against children or adults. In fact, evidence indicates trans people are far more likely to be the victims of violent crime than the perpetrators. This is an increasingly politically divided world, and I feel that this will only be made worse by making Odessans fight against another to strike out at those who are not even their enemies in reality. To encroach upon the freedom of the people that you and I serve will do nothing for them of value. Moreover, the costs of such enforcement would far outweigh any perceived benefits. I do not believe we can afford to get the city into the inevitable lawsuits that would result from this ordinance, much less to pay the court fees of litigants, as outlined in the proposed changes. We already have our hands full solving city staffing issues, improving our infrastructure, and tightening our budget so that we can better and more efficiently serve the people. It is my opinion that the city simply cannot make this work. I want to be right by this city as much as this council does, but I don't believe that this is the way to do it. I urge this council to vote against the changes to section 816. Thank you.
Good evening, members of Odessa City Council and fellow community members. My name is Alexander Ermos, and I have the honor of serving as the president of the Midland Odessa Chapter of PFLAG, a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting, educating, and advocating for LGBTQ+ community and their families since 1973. I'm here tonight to speak on agenda item number 13. I have read the proposed amendment, and it is not only unnecessary, but also a complete waste of the city's time, money, and resources. There is no evidence that this is needed. It's not addressing any real problem in our community. Instead, it's creating one, making people worried about something that just is not an issue. Odessa has real challenges we should be tackling, things that impact everyone's quality of life. Instead, we're wasting energy on where people go to the bathroom. I would also like to talk about enforcement. It would be a ridiculous use of city resources and end up costing taxpayers, and we could be using that money for things that actually make Odessa a better place to live. I am your community member, but I am also a transgender man. I've been living as a man for almost 10 years. I moved to Texas years ago to build a better life, and since then, I've built my family here with my wife and our son, and Odessa has become our home. At the end of the day, this ordinance is about fear. It's about distracting people from the real issues by making them feel afraid of something that they don't understand. That is not leadership. It's not serving the people of Odessa. It's a political tactic, and everybody sees through it. Let's focus on the things that actually matter, like improving public services, infrastructure, and building a stronger community together. This ordinance does nothing but waste time and sow division. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Bradley Burke. I grew up here. I went to Burnett Elementary School. I went to Bonham Junior High School. I graduated from Permian. I've also served in the United States Navy, OIF, OEF, and I come to speak to you as a father, not out of anger and from my heart. I'm involved, I'm a member of the queer community, and I'm happy to be one of the safe, to own a small business here in Odessa, one of the few places where this community fills. anybody I've ever taken to church, or that's ever taken me to church. It's very simple. This, this is based on fear. You have this attorney that's come in from Texas Values, which is a, from what I understand, is a biblical Judeo-Christian nonprofit to get the values of Christianity in Texas. Well, the last time I checked, we were a country based on religious freedom, not based out of just one book. Now, I have read the Bible, up and down. I'm sure I can quote more than most Christians I've met. The point is, this is fear. This is all based on fear and I don't know if they don't trust our local law enforcement. I do. I still call the cops when there's an issue, but there's a lot of homeless people in this town. There's a meth epidemic. There's fentanyl epidemic. There's people ODing. There's, I believe we had three drive-by shootings in Midland and Odessa this past weekend. There are a lot of things that need the time and resources that this city can provide and making a witch hunt out of a community of people that has done nothing harmful to this community is a serious waste of time, resources, and effort. I trust our police officers, but I don't think that they should waste their time having to check everybody's IDs going in, who's going into whose bathroom. We don't have that problem. We haven't had that problem. We won't have that problem. I don't care how bad you are scared of it. This is Odessa. This is Odessa. I've come back here so many times, it's crazy. But this is my hometown and we are better than this. I look to y'all. I vote. I'm proud to vote. I look to y'all to make the right decision on this and stop wasting time and money on it. Thank you.
Ronnie Lewis?
I wasn't going to speak on this today. I came here to talk about TGAA and the Golden Parachutes, but after listening to this attorney speak for so long to try to sell his case, which I know he's making four, $500 an hour, no matter nonprofit or what, it was, it was pretty overwhelming for me. And this environment we're in, I've listened to these people, these Odessa people here talking, this environment we're in, I just can't, I can't believe it. In my mailbox today, I've got a flyer from, from Councilwoman Swanner and she says, "Married to a man."
Okay, okay. No, no, you're good. He's good.
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, you gotta stay on, stay on.
Oh, I am. It's married to a man, is what she says.
You stayed on topic.
Yeah, it's married to a man. Okay. Well, that's a big deal. She is married to a man. Well, that's what we're getting at right here. What is this? If it takes this attorney over 25 or 30, 45 minutes to sell a case? I mean, just yesterday, you were at the, at the polls and you said, "No, it's sales." That's what somebody told me about turning them back with a, with, because of the, of the lines. Well, if it takes this man 45 minutes and all that legal mumbo jumbo to sell this case and we got these people coming up from Odessa, what I want to know is where this stops? If you're doing this, we know you've attacked Craig, save Odessa, we love Odessa, which has kids busting from out of town right now. Okay, we know you've attacked Craig. We got this going. Where does it stop? If y'all find out that a fireman might be gay, I'm on track. I'm not getting off track. If there's a policeman that has a, a gay child, where does this stop? That's as loud as I want to leave it, right there. Where does it go? If y'all get reelected, do you keep going? What is the stopping point of all this gay bastion and all this? Where does it stop? And I wasn't going to speak, but I've heard 45 minutes of legal mumbo jumbo over something that should have taken five minutes.
Mr. Haney, let me, can I ask you a question? You proposed this. Was this necessitated from you to put, bring this on the dais about fear? Do you want to talk about that?
I talk about, I love everybody. I don't have any fear, but I have grandkids and I have kids, I have granddaughters that, and I hear from the same people that have kids, they're girls and everything, and I hear the same thing. Well, I don't care who goes in there with them, they ain't coming out with them. And so, I, this has nothing to do with fear. What I'm doing is putting protection out for my grandkids. I'm putting protection out for my daughters. I'm putting protection out for something that we don't, we should never even had to go through this in life. It's, men go to men's room, girls go to girls' room. That's the way it's been all of our lives. Nothing's changed. And so, I am not doing anything here other than protecting lots of people out here who want an ordinance done. But the city is, is already has one here in place. We just made some, some adjustments to this and that's where we're at. There's no fear here. There's never been fear. I love, I don't care who you are, what you do, what you do in the privacy of your home is your business, but I don't need to see it in public. I don't need to see you going into a lady's bathroom while my granddaughter's in there. I don't need to see that. That's where I come in and say, "No, no more." So, and you keep saying that, what's happened? Well, it's already happened two or three times, but we kept that out of this because we want this to stand up on its merit, not, not on bringing in people out here and, and do this. But the scare factor, that's enough of, you know, my kids are young. They don't need to be scared in the bathroom. And I'm, I'm their granddad. I'm their, their father, my wife. I'm her husband and I'm here to protect her. And that's what this is for. I'm, I'm for the other people here. I'm for the ones that are going to get hurt by this. I'm, I'm for what should never happen. It should never even come down to this, but this is, this is where it has come and the ordinance that I, I put out here is, is easy.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Mr. Haney, when you said that somebody was going to go into the bathroom, but they weren't going to come out.
Stop, stop, stop.
I want you to elaborate on that.
You've already had your time to speak.
I hear people tell me what, no, I'm not supposed to answer you, so.
Stop. Just give us a moment, give us a moment, let, let him have his time.
So, and then, so, I'm just hearing what people are saying. These are, these are grown men. I don't want anybody hurt for anything. So, why not have a protection put in here so that this, this doesn't happen? So, that's, that's all this is for.
The other thing I was going to say is, October 24th, 1989, this ordinance has been a city ordinance. This isn't anything new. This has been an ordinance. It's been established. What we're establishing here is simple definitions.
Now, please, please address the council as a whole and not in any individual.
Yeah, I was curious about a specific comment, though. That said that, "I am not afraid. If a man goes into the restroom, he will not come out." I need you to elaborate on what that means.
I didn't say a man going into the restroom.
Then what did you say?
I said somebody, a man being in the bathroom with my, with my grandkids. And friends of mine are the same way. They do not want this happening because they, they don't want to have to go in there and drag the guy out so that my, my daughter can go to the bathroom.
Drag the guy out?
Yes. Pull him out of the bathroom with their kids. That's, this is what this is. A grown man going into the bathroom with a young child is not, is not appropriate.
That isn't happening. Everybody knows this. As that one guy said, which I do appreciate.
Ma'am, we, we, we're addressing, we're addressing a specific comment. Are we addressing a comment? Do you have a comment to address?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm saying that Haney is specifically, in this instance, Councilman Haney, you're honorable.
No, no, that's fine. Just Councilman.
Councilman Haney is advocating for violence against people.
Is to prevent violence, young lady.
Yeah?
Okay. So, that, that's good. I appreciate it. Just give, give us some time for, I want to allow the, the dais to have some comment if you don't mind. You can take a seat if you want.
Is this the way that you are, that you talk to the people that you serve?
No, I just want to be able to have a dialogue without having an argument.
I, I know. I just, is this the way that you speak to the people you serve?
Mayor, you have a couple others up there.
Yeah, we have some more comment cards, so we might, we can get to them, please.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Ben White, if I'm pronouncing it correctly?
Do we have any more? Do we have any more? Do we have any more? That's it. Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I have lived in the Odessa Midland area for the past five years, moving down here originally from Wyoming. Coming down here originally, I was very non-reflective on myself, very hidden without realizing it. And it was only after meeting the beautiful people who are sitting in the back row, Alexander, Gail, who have all spoken today, as well as others back there, that I've been able to reflect on myself, open up, and see what a beautiful, loving community that the queer community is. I've seen nothing but friendship, camaraderie, and community aid, focusing on providing better lives for the people of Odessa and Midland together, organizations working hand in hand to bring these communities closer. I feel that this ordinance will only serve to lessen these ties and move these beautiful, amazing people out of these states, out of Odessa, out of Midland, and out of Texas as a whole, for fear of themselves, for fear of reprisal in fiscal ways, in laws that unjustly affect them, and in creating a culture of fear for them and their children who live here, for them and their friends and family who live here. I find it really unfortunate that this is an ordinance that has to even be brought up at all. I just really hope that the City Council today can make the correct decision, that I feel, which is to just not pass this ordinance. There's no reason to make these changes. What few attacks have happened, were not at the hands of someone who is trans or who is part of the queer community. It happens at the hands of someone who is exerting their power over someone else. You, Passionless Mosin, is in that same line. You're exerting your power over someone else so that they cannot live the lives that they see fit. I appreciate you listening to my comments and thank you.
Thank you. So, that's it?
That's it.
Council, any comments, discussion? I, I have a question. When we go back into, John, if you don't mind, Councilman Haney, this came from Texas Values, see some of these changes from the, out?
Yeah, we took them off of what has already been passed in a couple of cities and bought them into this.
Okay.
Where they've already stood to time in court.
Okay. Mr. Jones, we have an ordinance in place.
We do.
This is an amendment to, an existing ordinance.
This is an amendment to 816.
And 81, 81 dash 6, 8 dash 6 dash 1, correct?
Right.
Has been in existence for how long?
1989.
Yeah.
And it is designated in all city properties, including gymnasiums, community centers, op buildings, pools, parks, designated bathrooms by biological sex, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, in section, section H, private, private right of action, you scratched out other relief, and item one, any person.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah. And that is not currently in our ordinance.
Any person. And our current ordinance reads how?
Well, the private right of action is, is going to be, would be added to it.
Okay.
It, it, it's completely, yeah, it's not there.
Okay, so the whole section of private right of action, item one, any person. John, can you describe that as anyone other than a government employee?
That's right.
And. Which, which, that's why I say John Q.
Well, and.
This is a civil component. Am I correct?
It, it is, yes. Well, the ordinance has civil penalties and civil trespass is the way it's defined as far as what the city would do. So, and the reason I'm saying this, I don't want you to think civil versus you versus an individual, right? The subsection H is about just making it clear, this isn't the government involved in this, right? So.
Which, which will exclude law enforcement.
Yes. As a matter of fact, there's a provision in here that makes it clear that, I'm going to get to that. This is subsection six, where it makes it clear that the government cannot participate with that individual private person to bring this private cause of action.
Where is, where is that?
That's, that's if you go to the next page, subsection six, it starts with notwithstanding any other law.
Notwithstanding any other law, neither state nor its political subdivision.
May act in concert.
Or, any district or county attorney, nor any officer, employee of the state or political subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the government, yeah. So, does that make sense? So.
Well, well, I, I, I'm trying to put it in Mosleyman terms. So, there's been some, so, there's been some discussion, even prior to this, I've heard it about, our police has other, other important things to do and they do. Trying to get, understand that there is no criminal aspect of this. Is that correct? Am I correct in that? Well, I'm just saying, and, 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 this is what I'm trying to explain. Police are not going to go around checking per, per certificates, any more than the police is going around to hotels and checking if somebody's driving to the city of Odessa on their way to an abortion in New Mexico. And that means, that's a human trafficking aspect of a civil ordinance that's in place in more than 50 cities in the state of Texas, Odessa being one of them. You know, we, we get to a point where we wind up discussing one thing, we go in, in, in another direction, and this is how we wind up having conflict. We've heard fear, we've heard trans community, we've heard our police going around and they're going to enforcement. I, I don't know how we wind up getting there that our police are going to be standing guard at every restroom throughout the community and checking birth certificates. Help me understand this. This is a civil component that we're, they're reading here or in like?
It wouldn't work any different than it works now if you had law enforcement concerned about an issue like this, right?
Or, 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 or an individual, John Q. Public.
That's true.
In, in notifying law enforcement.
That's right.
Of a violation of privacy.
Correct.
In a, a segregated bathroom that exists within the city limits of Odessa.
And then, and then law enforcement being able to respond to that concern or that report.
Or complaint.
That, that complaint that's been raised, right? And, you know, we see this a lot these days, right? The government saying, "If you see something, say something," right? Something going on that we think is of a concern, let law enforcement know. Let someone in government, someone in enforcement know, right? This is part of what we do collectively as a community. We look out for each other, right? And so, that's how these things would work too, is letting law enforcement know, "I saw this." They investigate and then they take it from there. But you have, and I'll tell you, part of this, and I, where the private cause of action to some extent has started, you've started to see it here and there, is because of a frustration and concern that sometimes government officials are not willing to enforce certain measures. Not these here, I'm not, this isn't about anybody individually. It's just a trend that we have seen in other areas of law in the state of Texas. Sometimes there are local government officials, could be law enforcement, others, they don't agree with what Governor Abbott says on border security, on who can vote and what you show, I mean, a variety of things. And so, there's been this concern that what happens if local government decides not to enforce it? And on the issue of life, we had district attorneys come out and say, "We're not going to enforce the Texas heartbeat law, even if it's passed," right? And so, so part of it is coming from the public saying, "We individually want to have the opportunity and ability to address these issues in court in a civil and respectful way if the government, for some reason, decides they don't want to enforce it." And I think it's important for this body to know that whether it's you voting on this issue or not, this issue isn't going away. It, it would not surprise me at all to see, whether some of you are still on this council or not, at some point, different people that are on the council, they will be looking to pass an ordinance like this, but if you will, advocating for something that goes the opposite direction, that forces people to allow men in women's bathrooms. And I also think, this is coming from discussion that we hear privately from parents and young people that are worried and they're afraid to say something, right? They're afraid to get canceled on social media. They're afraid to get attacked, right? Some people here already personally attacked me, right? I mean, you know, I'm here to help and serve, but I understand. People have different opinions. Sometimes they get a little, you know, passionate about it, spirited, as we might say sometimes. But that's why many times people, they're telling us and other lawmakers, "We would love to see y'all do something about it." There is a culture of, I don't know if you want to call it fear, but people feel like, "I'm going to get sued." I'm gonna get sued if I say something about, I saw a man go into a women's bathroom because some entity's gonna come sue me, and I'm gonna look like the person that's the bad person. So, they, this ordinance helps the government have a clear area, defining area on these issues. This ordinance started in eighty-nine, makes a lot of sense, that it probably needs to be updated. It's not uncommon at all in the legislative process, new things come up, you know, so many of the things you see, the legislature is updating laws, a little tweak, something new, to bring things to where we are now. So, that is something I do want this body to be aware of, you know, and we hear these arguments at the state legislature and other government entities, oh, why are you working on this issue, wasting your time, suggesting you can't work on more issue than one that you care about, right? It's not true, you do it all the time, and you're, and you're thinking about where things are now, but I do firmly believe that these issues aren't going away, it's a matter of what this body's gonna do versus what another makeup of this body may do, or other, others may do on this issue. It is a very active issue.
Jonathan, let me...
So, you're making a, a good decision by doing something about it.
Let me start, let me stop you there. So, so let me clarify this.
Yeah.
You're here of your own volition? Did this city council, anybody on this city council contact you for you to attend and speak today? So, did you come out of your own volition?
I did.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, 'cause I wanted to make that clear, because I, I started getting this thing that we're, we do, the city council, on a day, not a daily basis, but there's multiple items going on all the time.
But it's not improper for members of the government to reach out to us.
I understa, okay.
And it happens frequently.
Yes, sir, let me, please, give me a minute to finish my point.
Sure.
We have several items on this agenda that we're dealing with just today, and we had one earlier in the work session. And so, it is, every item on this is pertinent to the city, and, and so, it, 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 it's multifunctional. You know, we deal with, and, and this has been going on for, for decades, and so, I mean, this has been incorporated in nineteen twenty-seven, and it's had agenda since then. I just wanted to make it for the record, I know, I've never, we've never had, I, I've heard of Texas, I don't know anything much about you, I wanted to make it perfectly clear that this council did not reach out to you and, and to ask you to, but you're not being paid by this council or any taxpayers going to this, you're, is this their mission as far as your organization, this is what y'all, you guys do? Can you talk, just real briefly about that?
Well, we specialize, no, we specialize in law and public policy issues.
Okay.
Of coming up with solutions, addressing these issues. Sometimes we're supporting a piece of legislation, sometimes we're against a piece of legislation, sometimes we're in court on these matters, sometimes we get calls from elected officials at a variety of different levels. I'm working on something, I'm trying to figure out what to do.
Were you called at any time for any elected official?
I was not.
Okay.
But, but my point to you is, that's, that's not a...
Odessa City Council website, let me just...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, I'm tired of listening to you, you've been talking for an hour and a half, but I'm, I'm sorry, but you telling me you looked at the, the city of Odessa Facebook page or the, or the agenda and said, oh, I need to get to Odessa. I'm sorry, sir, I do not believe that for anything.
That's not, I, I didn't say that, but, yeah.
I asked, he asked you if anybody asked you to come, or if you're getting paid, and you said no. I ask you, did you, of your own volition, look at ours in the night and say, I'm going to Odessa to talk on this issue?
I did not.
And somebody told you?
Not a member of the council.
So, you were.
Which, it's very common that concerned citizens come to us and look for assistance. Sometimes they feel like we're able to say things that they're not able to say, they live in this community, and it can be difficult to be around your neighbors, try to, try to sort these things out. We understand how that can be, so sometimes we're in a better position to talk about these issues.
I appreciate it, thank you.
We're happy to...
We have no more comments?
Yes, we do.
We, we have more comments, okay. Uh, go ahead.
Michael Delarosa.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hi, council members, my name is Michael Delarosa, I'm a student at ETPB. Odessa and the Permian Basin is my home, it has been my home and will always be my home. I'm gonna be graduating early, I wanna become a clinical psychologist. My favorite quote is, tend to the gardens you can touch, and I wanna go after my PhD, and so unfortunately, I'm gonna have to leave this garden for a little while. I wanna be able to come back. Stuff like this will make it scary. Please don't kill my garden. Thank you.
So, just a couple things real quick. First of all, I believe it was Councilman Mata who brought up concerns about enforcement initially, and it was dismissed as a general non-concern. That seems to be incorrect, in my opinion. Let's face it, people are petty. We, petty. We see it all, I think all of us see it all the time, oh, so-and-so slighted me, so now I'm going to get back at them. Civil enforcement of someone went in the wrong bathroom is a real good way to do that. And it wouldn't have to be someone who looks wrong, it could be just a petty slight that ties someone up in court. Say, a, a, an ardent supporter of your political rival ties you up in court for, what, three or four days on garbage?
I'm sorry.
Oh, you could go into the men's room, and then someone says, oh, well, that's, they're not a man, and now you spend how long in court trying to prove otherwise? And, okay, if it's as simple as a birth certificate, that's still scheduling court date, probably the next day, if you're lucky, going into court to prove it, and then probably the third day to wrap things up. That's days of time out of pettiness. And, yeah, there's plenty of people in this, in this city, they're more than petty enough for that. I work with the public, trust me, I've met them. There was also been some, you know, there's been some contentions that none of this is about fear. Quite frankly, it is about fear. It's about fear of change, fear of learning, fear of growing as a person. It's also about inspiring fear in an already marginalized community, a community I'm part of. Most people have a very specific image in mind of someone who's trans. So, let me ask, do I meet that image in your minds? Do I look trans to you? We come in all shapes, and we're just people. All we've ever really asked is to sit down and have a conversation and learn with us. But some people seem to be unwilling to. They'd rather be afraid of that growth and inspire us to be afraid so that they don't have to see us. And lastly, there were some questions asked to the lawyer about why he came here after someone made the comment that he's making four or five hundred dollars an hour. And I appreciate the point we made. Yeah, someone told him to come here, and someone's paying his bills. Everyone else has spoken, we're here because we live here. We're here because we want to continue to live here. I would certainly hope that as elected representatives of this city, you give more weight to the people who live here than someone who was paid, probably flew in first class to come here. He doesn't care about this community, he cares about his paycheck.
Three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Haney, I just have one more question, 'cause I've been reading over this.
Right, right quick before you move on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I know Mr. Covey, and I know, been around Mr. Sa, Sa, John, Mr. Jonathan. I did not call them, nor know they were gonna be here tonight, nor have any contact. This is for people living in other states with them, just because I know them.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you knew that.
We do have one more speaker.
Another speaker. Okay, come on, come on down.
Wally Schwartz.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me just a minute to speak. I had no intentions to speak tonight, I simply wanted to come and listen, felt like it would be a heated issue, and it certainly has turned out to be that. I am born and raised, lifelong member of Odessa, Texas. I went to school here, my family is here, my kids are here, my grandkids are here. I'm a business owner, partial business owner of a second business, and I also am a pastor of a small, non-denominational church. You know, we're called to live with the love of Jesus, to everyone around us, and we hope we do that. And I have listened intently to the speakers that have spoken tonight, and they speak with passion. And I put in front of you that it's our responsibility to protect the gay population, the transgender population, the straight population, all who are citizens of Odessa, Texas. It is our responsibility to support and encourage and be with them. However, that doesn't mean that I have to compromise my beliefs, it doesn't mean that I have to compromise my standards, and it doesn't mean that I don't have to be concerned for the protection of my children and my grandchildren. I have two grandchildren who live with me, one attends Permian High School, one is older and out of school, and I have eight grandchildren total. I think, because of the things that have been put in front of us, whether you're heterosexual or, or gay or trans, it doesn't make any difference, because of the way that the culture has been moved, and the arguments that are taking place, and the debates that are taking place on life in general right now, I think this is something that has to be addressed. And the protection, I understand, and I, I want all who have spoken tonight, and all who live a different lifestyle, or a, a different social status in their lives, I want all of them protected. That doesn't change for anybody, regardless of sexual orientation or, or anything that they're living in, they need to be protected. But it doesn't mean that I have to compromise my standards or my beliefs to do that. And it shouldn't offend them that I disagree with them, just like it shouldn't offend me that they disagree with me. And they said, it's not, I, I heard the comment tonight, that it's not hap, it doesn't happen, it not happened, I heard another person come up and say, in the one, two, or three times that it's happened, and just like I wanna protect them for being safe and to be able to live their lifestyle, and them to be able to choose their lifestyle, and, and, and...
Three minutes are up.
Thank you. And, and I, I want, I respect everyone's right to live their lifestyle. However, there must be a respect for me to be able to live my lifestyle as well. And so, if there's going to be protection, which is, which is what is put in front of us all of the time, for a heterosexual, straight, male, whatever you wanna say, white, angry male, 'cause I'm, you know, older than I wanna be, then that protection should extend for my family, and my children, and my grandchildren as well. So, maybe it has only happened one or two, three times, but I think what's in front of you tonight is your opportunity and ability to protect across the board so that the one time doesn't happen.
Good point.
I think it needs to be in front of you, I think there needs to be a vote, and my personal opinion, whether agreed upon or not, is that you pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will anyone else get a time?
Council, you've already spoken.
Can we call the question?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I was gonna live up to the, council, any other firm or comments?
I'll call the question. Can I call the question?
Call the question, I gotta call the question before, I, 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 Councilman Haney, any last words? This is your ordinance, you brought it up.
I'm good.
Okay, we have, call the question. We have, alright, it's been going on for a while, so let me get back where we're at. So, we're back on item thirteen. The discussion consider amending section eight dash one dash six, entering a restroom of the opposite sex of the city code of ordinances. This is amending the current restroom use regulations in public buildings. I have called the question, council, if there is no more discussion or comments, entertain a motion to, either a motion to approve in a second, or a motion to not approve, I'll leave it up, open up to the dice.
I'm making a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Haney, is there a second on the dice?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor of amending section eight dash ones dash six, entering restroom of opposite sex of the city code of ordinances, and amending the current restroom use regulation in public buildings. I have a motion by Councilman Haney, second by Councilmember Swan, all those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
We have two, we have two, okay. So, we have five, five in favor, two against. Is that correct? Okay. Alright, we're gonna move on to item fourteen. Consider request of the city of Odessa applicant to amend chapter four, business regulations, article four dash two, alcoholic beverages in the city code of ordinance to update the city's approval process, enforcement procedures for alcoholic beverage license to enhance public safety. This is an updated regulations to the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city of Odessa. Mr. Fisher. You know, we had suspended the rules, I would've known, I would've gotten you out of here.
Alright, thank you all, Mayor Holman, members of council. I'll try to be brief, 'cause we've had a work session, town hall, P and Z meeting on this, I know everyone probably wants to go home soon, so I'm just gonna summarize the main points and any of the changes since last time, but basically, long story short, our alcohol beverage ordinance was last updated in nineteen eighty-three, so that's forty-one years ago, and there have been some incidents recently, which I'm not an expert on or familiar with all of the details, but this is common across any municipality, whether in Texas or outside of Texas, and there's a, there is a public safety concern. From our research, compared to other types of uses, and, and, this is in Odessa as well as other communities, most business owners follow the rules, most bar owners, restaurant owners follow the rules. Unfortunately, there's a very small amount of people that don't, like in, in any industry, and they might over-serve, or there could be drugs, or there could be other things. So, how do we allow the majority of business owners in our community to continue to sell alcohol, and then, but still allow an enforcement mechanism for that very small amount of, of situations where there's, where there's an issue? So, we looked at the nineteen eighty-three ordinance, and we, we noticed a couple things. So, the, the first thing is enforcement, it did say that we could enforce, but it was tied to city code violations. It didn't talk about the Texas Penal Code, criminal law, and other things. So, what happens in those situations? How do we do that? Also, there wasn't, one of the things that staff believed, and I think you all did too, you had asked us to, in our last meeting, to, to look into this, is better coordination as well between our police department, between TABC, and between city staff and the business owners, and it's really just having those communications and talking. So, as a result, we had our town hall, we went to P and Z, so we've added a couple things. Long story short, the first thing we believe that needed to change is, TABC, and, and just, just for the recap for the, some of the newer members here tonight, or the audience that, that weren't involved in the original meetings, this includes any sale in, of alcohol in Odessa, so for off-premise alcohol, that's your convenience stores and your liquor stores, as well as on-premise alcohol, so those are your bars and restaurants and theaters that, that sell alcohol. So, the city right now requires an alcohol license for on or off-premise every year, TABC's only every two years. So, there's a discrepancy there, and that makes enforcement confusing. So, we wanted to clean that up, allow it every two years. The other benefit is that the business owner only has to pay now every two years, one time, instead of splitting it up into every year. The other good piece of news is that our fees are already at the maximum allowed by the state, so there's no fee increases by changing the process at all. There were some concerns initially about design standards and things like that, so we've rolled those back, and, and we believe that that's better served through the zoning ordinance, as part of a zoning cleanup later, not just for bars, but for any uses, and kinda stay away from, from those, and we'll go over that in a minute. So, changing that process, the other thing that we looked at is, right now, without the enforcement mechanism, they can come in, or not come in, to get a city renewal, and if they go get their TABC renewal under their Ames program, TABC doesn't require them to check with the city. So, that's a problem. If we have a city violation, or OPD or something, and we find there's a, there's an issue, they don't have to necessarily come back in... don't have to necessarily come back in and talk to us to get their TABC renewal. Same thing in reverse. If our, all of our age departments sign off on something, we don't know that they're going to necessarily go to TABC, and most business owners would, because they want their TABC license and follow the rules, but they may not necessarily have to. And so that, because again, that takes a lot of time for us to, to check things. So this would clean that up. This would have a process where OPD, TABC, the city, the business owner, all, all communicating together. The other difference is, right now, the current process is, they have a paper form, a checklist. Well, we've, thanks to all of you, we've got our electronic tracking system now, MyGovernment Online. So that's consistent with TABC's Ames system, where we'll be able to review these electronically. Customers won't have to come in and have to go from department to department to walk it around. They can just submit it, all the departments will look at it, that'll increase and improve processing times, and we'll get them their license quicker. So, and again, if, for those people who still want to come in and talk to somebody in person, we'll still have that service. We're not taking that away at all. So the one-stop permit is essentially what we're going to. So somebody could sit at home on their own computer, takes just 30 seconds to create an MGO account, and then they would go through the process. So nothing really changes in terms of the departments that are already involved, except for a few things. So billiard collection still is that first reviewer. So they're going to review and look at whether there are any TABC licenses that were already approved or, or not approved. So if a TABC license was suspended or revoked, then we wouldn't issue the alcohol license for the city. We would want that process cleaned up. Or if there was, the, the big difference is bringing OPD into this process instead of waiting for a complaint basis to happen. Because the worst case is, we don't check the enforcement, now there's an issue with over serving, the police, you know, they're right on it, but there's not that enforcement for us to then take away the license. This will allow us to do that, or to temporarily suspend it. So we've got, the, the three main things are, we can now check at the application process to see if there's any violations of city codes, or to see if there's any TABC violations or, or Texas penal law that they've committed a crime. Number two, in between the process, it allows us to also enforce either through a, up to 60-day suspension, consistent with most of the TABC ones on their penalty chart, or to allow revocation in the case of repeated offenses. So they still have a chance. So something like, you know, human trafficking, a major, you know, class A, not attorney, but those major violations under the penal code, that's first time you're gone. And that's, again, all of this would be consistent with, with what TABC is already doing. But if it's somebody that happens to bring a weapon or act, you know, act inappropriately at a, at a bar, and that bar owner's put all the investment in and has done a really good job, put in the security cameras, that does not mean that they're going to lose their license right away. We may need to temporarily suspend it, or we may need to see what TABC is doing, but again, there's, there's going to be good bar owners and good restaurant owners or convenience store owners that just happen to be on the scene of the crime. And so that's, that's not the same thing as someone who, who continues to do those things or does major crimes. So it'll go through billiard collection. City secretary still checks if it's in a wet area, so I believe all of Odessa does allow the sale of, of alcohol on or off-premise. Nothing's going to change there. Planning was just looking at whether the zoning, the use was allowed, so whether you're allowed to sell alcohol or not. That's very general. What if it's within 300 feet of a school, or what if it's, doesn't meet the setbacks or things? So we'll be able to do, planning will be able to do a check of the zoning and the setbacks and, and look at a floor plan. And that will save them time later, because then if they need a building permit, they already have those plans available. Building inspections, was checking those before, now they're just going to look at permits and violations, so we'll be able to basically look at everything now altogether in one shot. So we talked about the updated process. I just wanted to cover the, the site plan requirement, so the, the setbacks and how those are, are measured. So we have a diagram, because reading text is, can be very confusing. But long story short, if you're, if you're, open a bar from a church or a hospital, you measure from the front door down to the property line and across, and then up again to the door. A school has a higher scrutiny, so a school, it's in a direct line, from property line to property line. So there's really no change there. The only thing we added was to be consistent with state law, that if you're a private school, not for restaurants, but for bars where the majority is alcohol sold, that we can also enforce a setback, because private school kids, you know, should have the same level of, of, you know, being cautious about those sorts of things. So that, that's the only thing we added, just to be consistent. Okay, and then finally, decision and appeal. So if, basically if we find there's violations or we find there's other issues, primarily we're looking at OPD here. So if OPD or if, or if billiard and collection finds a TABC violation, and that's quick, we can go on their website and just see if something's been suspended or expired. We can, we can deny the application. There's still an appeal process to the city manager. That's kind of how we set it up first, so we didn't all tie you all up with, with this. They can then appeal that to city council, or city manager can just defer it to city council. Once it's approved, the applicant obtains the TABC license. Every two years, there's a renewal. And then billiard collections provides a copy of the license. The difference I was saying earlier is, we won't give the physical license now until they've spent the extra week or two to get the TABC license first. Otherwise, again, then there's no enforcement to come, to come back in. The final thing that we added, we mentioned we rolled back on the design criteria. We didn't want to get into planning and zoning too much and over-regulate anything, but OPD does have the authority for offenders to have some of those security design features. So they already have a SEPTED program. That's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, so they could require lighting or security cameras or things. They already have a voluntary program for that, and that can reduce the costs of insurance. So we think that OPD is the best to handle those sort of crime and safety matters, and so that's, that's where we decided to keep it as a recommendation. And again, you've got, so you've got the enforcement at the beginning of the process, you've got the enforcement at the renewal period, and then you've got enforcement in between the process. Can most of this be done now? Probably, but because a lot of it isn't spelled out or called out, there could be some, some legal issues there. So cleaning up the ordinance, streamlining the process, allowing electronic submission, and then allowing the enforcement, and still giving opportunities for, for minor violations. So it's very similar to what we do for pool halls, for adult entertainment, and for other types of businesses already. Two quick caveats, and then that's it. Special events, P and Z asked about that, what do we do with those? That's already, as I understand, and it's called out in our code, that's through OPD. So the police, they would apply for a permit for those. All those temporary, like those special events for two or three-day festivals, they, those are for, where they already have a mixed beverage license, or beer and wine license, or a beer license. So they're already going to go through this process first, and then they could then get the, the accessory license through OPD. Same with the billiard hall. They would get the police license first, and then they could come to follow this process to sell the alcohol. Last point, a lot of other cities require these to go through a specific use permit to city council. Time is really important, as we all know. Some of those take two months, two and a half months. I've worked for those cities before, nothing wrong with that, but you, you all have, just even tonight, some of those issues you've had to deal with, that takes up enough time as it is. So planning department, OPD, billiard and collection could all be part of this electronic process and not have to tie you up with, you know, three or four applications a month looking at those specific use permits. So this is essentially an administrative process. It keeps what's already there, but it just codifies it, and it just allows everyone to, to work together. Now, how often? Can we just check every week or every day and see who's in violate? Sure, we can. But hopefully this will be a little bit easier, and by having this process, you know, will reduce, you know, those violations in the first place, so that code officers and billiard inspectors aren't going to have to keep going out every, every week or whatever on a complaint basis. This will hopefully catch some of those things, and people will think twice before they, they violate. So we're open for questions. We appreciate your time tonight.
Counsel, any questions? Jeff Fisher, you answered mine.
Okay.
It was that two-week delay process from the time the city issued, they wait for the TABC. Because in the past, under this page, section four dash two dash nine, the city would issue its temporary license and never go back to check whether it had gotten a TABC license. This has been a prominent problem, and so I'm glad you guys are cleaning it up. This is a lot of housekeeping.
Yeah.
And so I like the, the one-stop permit. I think it's kind of hilarious that, you know, the city secretary, what do you do? Go on the map and make sure they're in Ector County? Isn't the whole county wet? It's a real hard, arduous process. I hope you're not the one holding that up and bottlenecking it. So, council, if there is no questions, Jeff, what do we need to do out here? Do we need to take action? What do we do?
Yes, so, just my head here. Did we go? Yeah, so if, if you're in support of these changes, and again, it's, it's, as short as we tried to be, there's obviously a lot of text, so we just printed copies, so you can see what the changes were from, from last time.
Yeah.
But it's to approve the changes. The good news is, it was already, article four-two already existed, so we're basically starting with a clean slate, consolidating some of those things, and then, of course, adding that diagram. So that's really all it is. And hopefully this, once we get this process up on MGO, then they'll have the electronic option as well.
This is going to be one of the first two readings, this first approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, if there's no discussion, entertain a motion to consider request by city Odessa applicant to amend chapter four business regulation, article four dash two alcoholic beverage city code of the ordinances to update the city's approval process and enforcement procedures of alcoholic beverage license to enhance public safety. I have a motion.
I shall move.
By councilmember Vasquez, I'll second. I second by councilmember Mata. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item 14, consider amending the city Odessa city code chapter dash one dash seven boards, commissions, committees to remove the tax incentive committee. First approval.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this is basically a housekeeping item. As council approved dissolving the tax incentive committee and during the consent agenda, this will actually remove the committee from the code of ordinance.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion? No discussion? Entertain a motion to amend the Odessa city code chapter one dash seven boards, commissions, committees to remove the tax incentive committee.
So move.
I have a motion by councilmember Cornell. Second by councilmember Haney. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passing. We're going to move on to miscellaneous. We're going to move on to item 17, discuss and consider text the government accountability association TGAA contract. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would, I think this contract that we've entered into is not legal. This group is not a municipality, so there's no way we can have an interlocal agreement with a non-municipality. I research as much as I can, and I can't find any reason. And I voiced my opinion at the last meeting, that, you know, we have the Texas Code of Ethics we answer to, and this, this agreement doesn't seem to do us any good, except cost us a lot of money. And I'd like to have it removed, because I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a legal contract. And so, counselor, I'll let you add anything else.
I will, before you do.
Go ahead.
In the, in the first line of the interlocal agreement that you all approved, it talks about, it's entered into by and between political subdivisions of the state to form a joint transparency and ethics pool operated by the TGAA, Texas Government Accountability Association. The fact that ourselves and the city of Kingsbury are in, in this interlocal agreement, it's between us, it's a legal interlocal agreement.
I'm sorry, I just disagree, because this contract's not with that other city, it's with this nonprofit, non-sanctioned, no 501(c)(3) trust, no bank account, no EIN number. It's just an association. It's, it's just a, it's just a shell of something. So I don't believe that...
It's not a shell of anything.
Well, I'm just, John, just giving you my opinion. I just think that this contract, that our contract is with these people and not with that other city. And if it was, we'd have their name all over it. This is just with, we used to call them captives in the insurance business when all the workman's comp rates went so high, then a lot of guys would get together, a lot of, a lot of providers would get together and buy their workman's comp together as a captive to reduce costs. And this is about ethics, and it's not about cost. It's not about anything other than joining a group, which is expensive or can be expensive, and, you know, have to go to the public to get out of it. It, it just seems that, and I just don't like it, and I don't think there's any place for it. We don't, we don't need it.
Well, what are we scared of being in it?
Not, nothing.
Are we scared of conflicts of interest?
Well, there's already been conflicts.
Are we scared?
There's already been conflicts.
There absolutely hasn't. Are we scared of any of our, our, our committees having to submit to the Open Meetings Act? Are we, does it bother us that we have, are calling for high ethical standards for the citizens of Odessa? Are we worried about these standards extending to all city bodies and elected officials? Are we worried about releasing confidential information, which we'll talk about in executive session, has actually put an, a investigation that I'm doing right now at, in peril? I keep, it's just a question that keeps coming back, but as a member of this association, we, it is an association. It is with the other members of the association, and one of those members is a city. It's, it's a legal contract.
Yes.
I, I just, this is my opinion, I don't, you're talking about the, the code of ethics that exists in the state of Texas, and this, this says it doesn't supplant it. That code of ethics is still there.
Right.
And are we, are we, we're just laying another layer on top.
We are.
And John, I, you know, I don't want to get, I really don't want to go too deep into this, but I am going to tell you that, you know, you negotiated this contract ahead of bringing it to the council.
No, I didn't.
Well, then your, your email lies, because you got back this agreement that was supposed to be amended. Counselor Jones said that, that he asked you to take out the arbitration agreement. The second one came back, and it was not out of there.
And...
Yet there's an email from, from a guy named Matt Armstrong to you, saying, hey, John, here's the revised agreement, paragraph two, dealing with what we discussed. Let me know if this works.
Sure.
So you didn't sign a conflict of interest. John, let me finish.
I was asking...
You did not sign a conflict of interest, saying you knew this guy.
Why, really?
Why would I? I haven't, there's no, there's no world that would require me to sign a conflict of interest that said I knew this guy. You know what? I've known John Covey here for quite a few years. I helped his brother get support when he ran against Dave Phelan. I didn't sign a conflict of interest.
I'm through, John. I'm not going to talk to you about it anymore. I'm done.
I have a question, Mr. Jones. I'm hearing for the first time a lot of concerns on the part of Councilman Thompson. Did you fact-check him as far as what he said, that this was an illegal contract? And, and from a legal standpoint, do you agree or disagree?
We would like to ask that question.
I, I wouldn't go so far as to say it's an illegal contract. The only concerns that I have is, I'm really concerned, does it fit within the Texas government code, section 791? Is it truly, is it truly between us and the other city? It's not spelled out to be that. And, but if you look at the Attorney General opinion, they cite opinion MW347, that deals primarily with insurance. So Mr. Thompson's correct with that. It would like a captive or something like that. But, I mean, I wish the contract were clearer and everything. The easy solution for the city would be to enter into like a consulting service agreement, basically. But John may have a different opinion, you know?
Well, let me ask this.
It, it has been, it has been vetted, and, and I can give you, and these men here, here tonight, for a different subject, can vouch for him. tonight, for a different subject, can vouch for him. One of the board members is Matt Kraus, former state representative, a very capable lawyer. He wouldn't put out an ILA that's not binding. And we can fight it. But again, what are we so scared of that we would be willing to spend one red dime to fight this? There's obviously something.
John, there's nothing, we shouldn't even be talking about it.
Yeah, we shouldn't be. We entered into an agreement.
This agreement shouldn't even come to this council.
We entered into an agreement that you had seen, you had read, that we had discussed on times in my office. It's not, we're spending a lot of time on something that we all agree that everything in this is good. It's good for the public. Is it not?
It is.
I mean, I'd like to poll the council on that. Is it good for the public?
Yes.
Yes.
I know in the past, I know in the past, we discussed, and tried to implement when we first got on the council, for all the committees to be subject to the Open Meetings Act, and it was received with a lot of pushback from the legal department, from the city secretaries, because nobody wanted to do the extra work. You know, it was a request that the, I know I made, you know, for the city council. And the reason why was there was an incident on an advisory committee. Simply wanted to talk to an advisory committee, then city manager wind up, and two former city councilmen, one of the city councilmen's actually tried to assault Ms. Warner. And it was an advisory committee, wasn't even a meeting. Members of the other council walked in, and then after, you know, the advisory committee went in, immediately the hallway was contacted, and then, in the end, there was no article because there was no violation, because it wasn't a called meeting, there was, there was no agenda, there wasn't, there was no violation. Even after a point that two members of the council took them into the room and they were having a discussion with me, we had the former city manager and the attorney, you know, barging into the room because they were, he was asserted there was a violation of a quorum, there's only three of us in there. It was then that we had posed the, of having minutes to be requested, and all, you know, the thing, there was no mechanism to do that. Even as today, we receive PIRs of a committee that is not even belongs to the city at all. It's not a mechanism of the city, it's not a committee of the city. And in fact, we're even going to make appointments to a board that the city has nothing to do with it. I don't even understand why we even have to approve it when we don't even say who can and can be on it, which is strange. But these are remnants of the past that still exist today. And I post, I ask the question because there's been a deal of legality. What section of it in that contract, you know, hints, a hint of illegality?
Mr. Jones, I look to you always as our legal counsel. I want to believe in my heart that you have a lot of knowledge in municipality law, and forgive me for my sore throat, but that's why I asked you to fact check what Mr. Thompson's conversation was. And you said that you did have some hesitation about something or.
Yeah, the only thing that I really have hesitation with is that TGAA, if it's truly, I mean, in my mind, it still doesn't really fit within seven ninety-one of the government code. Because it's not, because we're talking about being with another city, and I, and if it's clearly laid that out, that, you know, that it's going to, we're going to be in business with another city, we're going to basically be fact checking each other, then it would be good. But I just, I just, that's my only concern.
Mr. Jones, you said in your mind. What do you base it on? Don't give me, give me an opinion, give, you know, you're basing on your mind. What precedent are you stating?
I have no precedent. I'm just saying, and just, for me, I would have preferred that it be spelt out.
So, how come you didn't say that when we voted on it? How come you didn't bring that to our attention in your opinion?
And I lean, I lean on, on Mr. Jones for his legal opinion, too.
We all do.
We all do. So, why didn't he bring it to us when we were looking at this?
We're seeing some walking going on, and I'm kind of curious as to why. I do want to be based on legality.
There's nothing.
Don't be wishy-washy.
In a Texas association, who are the members of the association? Who makes up the association?
On which one, John?
In a Texas association, any association, who makes up the association?
Members.
The members.
The members of the association. If I sign a contract with the association, I'm signing a contract with the members of the association and any member of that, it's not a whole lot different than what we did with Hartfield.
I agree with that.
But that's association of the public, because that did come up back at that point. But anyhow, I'm signing an agreement with the members of the association. The association itself is the members of the association.
Is that your definition, or is that a legal definition that you're referencing from?
Just a fact.
A fact.
A fact.
A fact.
Yeah, I mean, a fraud.
And you were facing, you were expressing your facts.
Yes, just, yeah, because.
So, it's one fact versus the other fact.
Were we the first, or were we the second city?
Second.
Second.
So, technically speaking, then there was a.
Yeah, we were the first. We weren't the first.
We weren't the first.
We, we joined the association where the member of the association was the governmental entity.
We asked that question that night.
We did.
Yep.
We did.
And the question was that night, by the, from the DIAS, was asked if we wished to get out of it in a year, what would be the process?
It would be.
And the process was explained. It would be by a vote by the public. It would be a referendum. Question then was posed to the member of the DIAS that asked that question, said, and the question was posed to that member of the council, is why would you want to get out? Or do you not believe in higher ethics? That's all in the minutes.
Yeah, sure. The other question that was asked, Mayor, was why do we need this?
Okay.
We've got the Texas Ethics Commission.
And it was.
Well, it's just an extra layer, you know? More bureaucracy, more, you know, whatever.
Okay.
I'm ready to let it go. I'm tired.
Okay.
This has been enough.
So, we're going to move, we're going to move on?
Counsel, we have speaker cards for this item. You have three minutes. Dallas Kennedy.
Dallas Kennedy, Counsel, thank you for letting me speak. These are my concerns with this. The city signed the contract on April twenty-sixth of this year. It was signed by Anthony Wilder on May second of this year, and he was signed as, he was signed as the authorized representative of TGAA. The first board meeting of TGAA was on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I watched the video, it was partly delayed because Anthony Wilder, the CEO, wasn't even on the board. They didn't realize they hadn't put their own CEO on the board. In that meeting, they also discussed, we haven't even created a bank account yet. So, who did we sign the contract with if they didn't have a board? Who authorized him to sign that? Now, they also require cities to put their videos up on their websites and their minutes and all this stuff. They have the same rules for themselves. Their May thirty-first meeting was on their website. They had another meeting June twenty-second, it's not been uploaded. Nobody can, the minutes aren't on there. I know they had that meeting because they had another one on August first, and they approved the minutes from the meeting on June twenty-first. So, what are those meetings? Why aren't they meeting their, why aren't they meeting their own ethical obligations, their own transparency? They have three people, obviously they're not set up to do this. You know, I have a lot of concerns that they didn't upload the second video or the minutes until I put it on Facebook. The city, the Odessa Americans saw what I put on Facebook, it shared. The next day, the meetings from, the video from August thirty-first was uploaded, and then that following Monday, the meetings, the minutes from the meeting of May thirty-first were uploaded, way outside of their own timeline, their own ethics. We have obligated our citizens to a contract that's almost impossible to get out of, with an organization that didn't even exist until May thirty-first. So, there is no way in the world Anthony Wilder had authorization to sign this contract because he didn't have a board to give him authorization. I also want to know who's paying for it? Because they've got two members, nobody's paid anything. Who's paying their attorney fees? Who wrote this contract? Who's paying their CEO? There's a lot of questions about where this money's even coming from. Who created this organization and who's paying for it? So, you know, I don't think our city, I don't think we have a legal contract because I don't think anybody was authorized to sign the contract when they signed it. So, that's my point.
Is, and Mr. Jones can answer this, is every CEO on the board of an organization?
Who?
Is every CEO of every organization on its board? Is the CEO of, is the CEO of the city of Odessa on the board of Odessa?
No, that would be you.
Is, is the CEO of every organization on its board?
If they were voting member.
Yeah.
So, not even relevant. That's an irrelevant example. Totally irrelevant. But Mr. Dallas made it irrelevant.
It was irrelevant.
But why is it relevant, Mr. Dallas? And now, there was a counterpoint.
I don't think.
It's not about a agreement. It's a counterpoint.
I didn't use the whole three minutes.
Go ahead, Dallas.
I just want to point out that whether the CEO was on the board or not, they didn't have a board till May thirty-first, so there was no board for him to even be on.
Have you asked the organization, have you posed these questions to them?
No, I haven't. I saw it on their, on their Facebook. I mean, I saw, I watched their first board, I watched their first board meeting.
You haven't, you haven't reached out to them and posed these questions?
No, I posed that to the, to the city who signed the contract with. They are the ones who said they didn't have a board till May thirty-first. I watched it. And Anthony Wilder said part of the reason they didn't have a board is because they hadn't put him on the board.
But you haven't posed that question to anybody either?
No, no.
That's all I was.
I'm not a member of them, I'm a member of the city, and I'm posing the question to the city council.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Ms. Ramon?
Uh.
Ms. Aguilera?
Ronnie Lewis.
I'm sorry. You're going to tell me something.
Let's do a happy dance.
My name's Ronnie Lewis, and I'm back here about TGAA. It's pretty obvious that John Beckmeyer is just trying to, trying to just make way and get his statewide political friends contracts. I've got to ask you, you just asked Dallas if he reached out to TGAA. Did you know anything about TGAA before? Did you know that they hadn't launched when y'all voted on it? Did any of y'all know that they hadn't launched? Nobody knew that, did they? If you had known they wouldn't, hadn't have launched, would you have voted for it? If you knew, if you knew they weren't a company, if they weren't an organization and they hadn't started, would you have signed on, or would you want some references? Anybody? Would anybody want references?
We knew that.
Mr. Thompson said he'd want.
We knew that it took two cities to join this organization. I don't know.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not. Did you know anything about their references? Did you, did any one of y'all know, hey, what kind of work are they doing? What, what, what can they bring to the table? Or you were relying on John Beckmeyer because he knows them from his political days? And you were just saying, well, John knows them, they're good, they're groovy, let's go with it. That's all I want to know. So, we know they didn't launch, nobody found out they hadn't launched, but they're going. So, we're going by John's. Now, John says that Matt Armstrong wasn't involved, but just like Mr. Thompson said, the emails prove he was involved. Now, he says they weren't involved. Anthony Wilder, in his own letter to the editor, said he facilitated the contract, so we're going to throw that out. Matt Armstrong was involved. Matt Armstrong is y'all's political consultant. We're good. Okay, that's that. Here again, I brought up at the meeting, transparency was said four times, conflict of interest zero, ethical zero, pizza was said six times because he's an international pizza guy. Okay, there's no TGAA. Just right here, Friday, y'all had a luncheon with a pastor group, some guy came in from Houston, riling up churches. And number two in this, it says recently the city of Odessa joined TGAA, which is a good government association that has the highest standards of ethics, transparency, and accountability. Do you agree with this decision to join TGAA? Well, how does this pastoral group know they're a good agency when they have no track record and they call them a government agency? Well, they're not a government association. They're not. But this pastoral group come up here and riled up churches saying, oh, everybody's upset because they don't want to sign a good government association. It's not a government association. It's, it's some of John Beckmeyer's political buddies, that they're probably great people, we don't know, but the contract wasn't done right. Y'all should have said, yeah, Matt's in it, Matt's great, he's friends of ours, our backer loves him. But that's the problem. It ain't the deal about, well, what's wrong with keeping people transparent? The problem is this wasn't done right. You know it wasn't done right, all y'all know it wasn't done right. Nobody checked into it. John said it's good, it's good. We got people coming in from out of, out of our area, and that didn't happen until we hired a city manager. It was a politician, not a city manager. We got people coming in with all this stuff, and nobody's checking into it because John says it's good. John says it's good because maybe his wife says it's good. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. The contract is bad.
Thank you.
I'm married to a woman, I get extra time, right? Like the pastor?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Richard McKeel.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am, I'll move into the past, or something.
No, no, take, take your time. Your three minutes haven't started yet.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Richard McKeel. I am an attorney, and I have already learned things here tonight that made me suspect that this is not even a valid contract. I also had concerns about it before, because I, what I've been able to read a little bit, that I've been able to look at this contract, it appears that if the city of Odessa sticks with it for any length of time, it's going to cost us money. We're going to pay to this association fees to be in business with them under this contract. And the other deal that bothers me, I don't think we have any need for that. I think as far as our transparency, we can do that on our own level. We don't need another layer to keep us transparent that should occur in our own government, not on another level. The other thing that certainly bothers me about this contract is the way that it can be terminated. That takes a referendum. And so, the people of Odessa have to go vote, there has to be workers. That is going to have a great cost to the city of Odessa because, as everybody now says, we're a big city. And so, putting together a referendum to have everybody come out and vote and have all the campaigning for that back and forth is going to take a great amount of money. This contract is not needed. After tonight, I don't even think it's legal. I don't think it's in existence, and I would ask that this council certainly walk away from the TGAA and the contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, that's all.
I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion that we void the contract. I don't think it's legal. I don't know how we do that. Danny's coming. He's going to take a vote. I mean, if you're going to take a vote on it, I mean, I think we'd be in litigation with them to get out of it. I mean, if that's, that's your motion, that would be, what we would have to do is to go and litigate it.
You're the council.
Yeah.
You put this up the council, you got to, you got to advise the council.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you'll be doing. I mean, if you're, if that's your motion to void it, then we would have to litigate it, we'd have to sue them to get out of it.
We've got enough lawsuits already brought on us.
Before taking any action, can we just go and look into this and make sure that it is legal contract?
Well, the thing is, the question, the question is the legality of how you get out of the contract.
Yeah.
The contract states it's a referendum.
If our contract states it's a referendum, the council can call for an election and it could be put in a general election. It's not a special election.
Next year.
It'd be eight, eight, so it would be next November. Okay? And so, it's not a special election. You can put it in the framework of, of a regular rotation. But my question is, the legality of the contract, which is a binding contract, would be in a referendum. Any action taken by the council on the dice could incur litigation. Because you, and, and I'm not a lawyer, but basically what I'm saying is that you would basically be in breach.
Yeah.
You know.
It very well could. So, if his motion is to get out of the contract, he would need a second and then you put it to a vote.
Yeah.
If he doesn't get a second, then he doesn't go in trouble.
You'd be in litigation.
And then we'll just have to deal with it, whatever the consequences are.
There hasn't been any considerations, Dave. There's two, there's two train of thoughts here that I've heard. One is not illegal binding contract. And the other one is that it is. Now, if it is, and you, and you make a motion.
It makes it more difficult.
That's what I'm saying, can we not?
Let, let me finish. If there's a motion and a second and enough votes to.
To avoid it.
To avoid it, then you incur litigation. The other one is, is to, my suggestion is to incur and post and answer some of the questions that were posed today.
Yeah, that's going to be my, can we give a directive to you to go and visit with TGAA and their attorneys and get the answers that we need?
And counsel, what are those questions? And I would pose them.
Yeah.
Because we're giving, we're giving Dan the, the litigation rather, you know.
More to the question.
It can't be, it can't be one person. We're not going to do one person. Let's make all this fair because a lot of people have been accused and a target was our city manager.
Yeah.
City manager, litigator, uh, we need to find one member of the council.
Mayor, Mr. Lewis, please.
I've got one minute, I just got a suggestion. I'm Ronnie Lewis. This is what I suggested to John Beckmeyer earlier. Why don't we, hold on, hold on. You have to fill out another card, sir, please. Just, let's keep legal.
This is going long enough.
And, and, and we're going to give you one minute.
Yeah, I've got a great suggestion.
Long enough.
And so, so let's go. And so, hey, you know what? This is, this is the process, guys. This is the legal process, everybody's going to have a vote, and it's not about whether it's entertainment or irritation, this is just the process. So, um, let's follow the toes. You know what? I'll, I'll serve on the committee. I'm not going to, I'm not going to bear, bear you on, beyond that. So, it'll just be the three of us and let's, let's get the questions, some of the questions that were posed from the public. Let's get them off the common, from, from the minutes.
Who's the three?
Myself, uh.
Me and.
And you want to be on it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll do my, I didn't want, I didn't want to put the bear on anybody.
Okay.
I'll just do it myself. So, be John, uh, John, Dan and myself.
Yeah.
And if anybody's willing to join me in this torture.
I don't, I don't mind serving on there either. It's not going to be on that main.
Okay, then we'll, this is for, and let's pose some questions and let's get some answers, even some that were put in the public. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Fair enough. One more speaker card?
Yeah, go ahead.
It was a solution, we had to come up with a solution.
I know, but I, I, I don't want it to come out.
I'm Ronnie Lewis and, and this is what, yeah, we're, we're, us private people, business owners and, and, and more clear thinking, leave the politics out of it. And I asked this to Mr. Beckmeyer because we know it's a sour deal. We know nobody on the council looked at, we know that. Nobody looked into TGAA. Nobody knew anything about TGAA. It's sour. It's kind of, ooh, sour. Anyway, my suggestion to John Beckmeyer, just get them back in here. If they're, if they're those, if those people are that good, which I'm not saying they're not, just get them back in here. Y'all, don't talk about pizza, talk about them, talk about what they can do for the city and, and, and work out this deal about the, you know, I, I don't even know really what arbitration or whatever, if, if you sign off on it, whatever. But the election part, if they're that good, well, we ought to be okay. I mean, in my business, I, I never got anybody, I never got to say, well, I'm going to buy only fajitas from you, Ronnie, I'm never going to go to Rosa's to get fajitas. I never got that. And that's what we have here. You're locked in without a vote. So, just bring them back to the table and start over and do it with full disclosure. I know Matt Armstrong, he was my deal. John knows this, John knows that, and just lay it out and start over.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on. We are on item 18, appointments of boards and board names. City Secretary Aguilar.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, so we have some applications that was sent to the city council. Councilmember Haney has a board appointment for the Odessa Development Corporation. He, his is Ronnie Phillips. Council has received that application. And I have some more if y'all want to, if you want me to go through all at once. Okay, then for the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, that was Marcia Brockman. She's a realtor. Who is a realtor.
Marcia Brockman?
Yes.
For who?
Uh, that is one of the council appointees. Uh, I would need direction on which, which.
Megan Gossip.
Okay, for Megan Gossip, okay.
For Megan, Marcia Brockman?
Yes, for Councilmember Swanner. And that is all that I have.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion? No?
Nope.
Okay. For item C, the Odessa Development Corporation, District Five, um, what, what was it again?
Ronnie Phillips.
Ronnie Phillips.
Uh, for Ronnie Phillips, for Odessa Development Corporation, we have a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? You're not motioning your own appointment?
I said second.
You're second, you're, okay. You're second in your own, okay. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to move. We're going to go to Odessa Housing Finance, Marcia Brockman, uh, to replace Megan Gossip. We have a motion?
So moved.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Councilman Swanner, Councilman Mata, all in favor indicate by a motion of aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimous. Right up to item 19, citizen comments and non-citizen items. Anyone wishing to make a comment on any non-citizen agenda items can do so by coming forward, stating only your name and full name. You have three minutes. You can do so by coming forward now.
Carmen Haynes.
You want to go ahead and, when you get to, tell the rules?
I'm sorry?
Rules, rules.
Hold the rules. Yes.
Addressing non-citizen.
The rules. Each speaker will be limited to, to three minutes. As your name is called, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. In accordance with the open meetings law, the city council cannot respond. However, council can direct the city manager or staff to, member to contact you.
Hello, my name is Carmen Haynes and I am an Odessa resident who is concerned about the lack of resources from Odessa Animal Services. And as many other community members have expressed concern in the last several months, I am not alone. Dogs and cats have continued to be killed by Odessa Animal Services when there are other solutions. There are offers of support from both national and local organizations to begin working on life-saving programs like Trap Neuter Vaccinate Release or TNVR. As I stated last month, TNVR is responsible for dropping the euthanasia rate in Louisville, Kentucky by 94 percent, dropping owner surrender rates by 82 percent. TNVR dropped the euthanasia rates in Jacksonville, Florida and San Jose, California by 67 percent. But, let's take a look at figures in the Permian Basin. Midland County had a save rate of 76.6 percent last year. Compare that with Odessa's 28.72 percent. The difference in policies in the two counties is Midland has TNRV. Odessa does not. 76 percent and 28.7 percent. We must do better. Our current policies are not working. No other solutions have been proposed to address the issue. If the City of Odessa continues in this direction, dogs and cats will unnecessarily pay the price with their lives. We know the challenges facing Odessa Animal Services and we understand that the community must be part of the solution. Existing cat caregivers and volunteers are vital to sustaining this program and ensuring its success. Odessans have been outspoken about their support for TNVR and are ready to work. We want to work alongside Odessa Animal Services to save the lives of our animals. We urge you to accept these offers of support for TNVR. The people of Odessa care and we deserve better from our city and for our community. Thank you.
Ronnie Lewis?
My name's Ronnie Lewis. I, I'm going to play a, a tape here to speak for me. You got here yesterday from New Orleans.
No, Houston.
From Houston.
Yes.
You've never been to Odessa.
Nope.
And you're over here campaigning for Javier Hoven.
Yep.
You love Javier Hoven, don't you?
Yep.
Uh-huh?
Yeah, yeah.
You campaigned for Javier Hoven.
Let's go Republican Party.
Right here, come, come from New Orleans, never been in Odessa before. Never been once. Kid, kid come in on a bus last night from Houston, he's from New Orleans, he's out campaigning for our mayor and two city council members. He's paid, oh, she's, she's paid, excuse me. She's been put in a motel and she's being fed along with three other people, and I think there's more, and they're part of the pack, the Save Odessa Pack. They're, they're shipping in out of town, it's out of state, political activists to campaign for them. I've been at a polling place for two days in a row, I'm sunburned. I'm doing it because I believe in my candidates. I'm not paying somebody from New Orleans to come up and, and campaign for, for my mayoral candidate. I have never, I can't even imagine that we live in, and Odessa's turned into a place where y'all are shipping in political activists. I got another one. He can't even say your name. He can't even pronounce your name. I don't know if you can hear it. I got it. I'm more interested in, in these young people coming up.
This is the first time I've seen them, so.
Yeah. Come, you, you got here last night from Houston.
Yeah.
And you was in Pennsylvania. And where else?
Ohio.
Ohio. Campaigning for different people.
You said you was driving a bike off.
It's, and it's, it's, it's your employment. It's a job. Wow, they just tell you. But they take care of you, they, they give you a room and all that?
Yeah, yeah.
Meals? They feed you though, right?
Yeah.
Because food's expensive.
Yeah.
All right. But you, you're, who's that you're campaigning for? Listen.
Javon.
What's his name?
Javier Javon.
Javier Javon?
Yeah.
What's his name? That's what we've come to, folks. We're important political activists for a non-paying job in our hometown. They're staying in hotels, they're getting fed, they're campaigning for people, they don't even know their names. And that's Save Odessa, that's, that's the name of the pack. That's pretty wild, y'all, I got to tell you. I told my mom this, she got sick, she's been involved in Republican politics for nearly 50 years. She got sick when I told her they're bussing in activists. You know what I told those activists? For a dollar more, you'd go campaign for Barack Obama, wouldn't you? And that one looked at me like, is it a deal? I mean, that's what we're, that's where we're at. Politically, that's where we're at now. Shipping them in. Do you not have any supporters that can work the polls for you? Are you having to pay people?
That's three minutes.
Yeah.
That's all it took. Item one, executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074A1. Two, deliberations about personnel matters. The city council may adjourn into executive session to deliberate in the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, dis- dismissal of public officer employed. Do we need to go ahead and do both of them?
Go ahead and do both of them and do one motion.
Go, item two, executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, economic development negotiations. The city council may adjourn into executive session one to discuss or deliberate regarding the commercial or financial information that the government, governmental body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near ter- territory of the governmental body and in which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. Or two, deliberate the offer of financial and other incentive in business prospect described by subdivision one, golfing and entertainment business. Counsel, we have a motion and a, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Swanner, second by Councilmember Vasquez. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimous regarding the executive session. We will be back. Motion passed unanimously, we are in the executive session, we will be back.